about all the challenges, it will only help them as they go forward in life and being involved with the, with nature.
Of course, as you know, councilman, there are other major zoos throughout the country that have made the decision to eliminate elephant exhibits. Detroit, of course, comes to mind. Is this something we're going to have to consider sooner or later?
No, I think Detroit made a decision. See, you've got to study that a little deeper. Some made economic decisions, they, they didn't do it for philosophical reasons, they did it for economic reasons. But the voters of Detroit approved a bond that improves the park, the zoo that they have in their park, for other issues at their zoo. There's about 60 zoos that are enhancing their facilities for elephants, including the Dallas Zoo, the Denver Zoo, the National Zoo in Washington. Not all the information is square when I say that. They had a, Channel Four did a Today Show, did an interview, they showed a map of the country. Our very own Robert Kevasik, a local reporter, was saying, "And 12 closed." But he didn't say over 60 have enhanced and improved their areas for zoos. So they've got to get the information out and also realize that GLAS is going to help and offset the cost to the taxpayers. Remember, there's been two big elections, one for the county for Prop A and one for the city, and Prop C, see, for the zoo, that the people said overwhelmingly, "We support the zoo, we want to see the master plan implemented." And I think the work that has been created, to create and design this new area, will only enhance the quality for the animals' health and welfare, as well as for the education of the young people and others, to the efforts and focus on the elephants in our zoo.
As you know, of course, it's been suggested the possibility of a sanctuary somewhere on the periphery of Los Angeles, the northern San Fernando Valley, as an example. In your opinion, is that viable as an idea?
Well, I would, I would welcome any effort to discuss a conservation center, a wildlife area there, but the cost is, is great. How do you do that? You don't transfer these funds to that. I, I don't see how that would work. I would like to have, discuss that in our committee, we'll look at that option, but I don't know, I'd never heard a full funding plan at all from the proponents of this measure.
If I'm correct, I think there are only two elephant sanctuaries in existence right now in North America, certainly in the United States. Has it been discussed what it might take to get Billy to one of those sanctuaries and what the cost might be of such a thing?
Well, there's a cost to that, there's a cost to everything, but I think there's also you've got to look at the relationship the Los Angeles Zoo has with the American Zoological Society, AZA. Maybe, maybe there would be a placement within another zoo, with an area that has already been built. Oakland has a tremendous facility, right across the bay from San Francisco, and I've visited Oakland. I've visited about 20 different zoos, from Jacksonville, San Diego, Oakland, Portland, our National Zoo, the Bronx Zoo, zoos in Berlin, in, in England, in, in France. All, I, I studied this, and, and they're important facilities. You know, these tough economic times, Jack, people are going to look for places to go. And for the price of one admission to Disneyland, you could take a whole family for a whole afternoon and have a wonderful time, plus, 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 at the Los Angeles Zoo. And more people are going to be looking for that because we're in tougher times. That's why GLAS is stepping up to say, "We're going to come up with the money to offset the tax on the general fund, so that this project can go forward." I've got to get that all in writing, got to get it all laid out, get the approval of the CAO, bring it back to the full council, and hopefully they'll make the right decision to move ahead with this project. At the same time, too, where the council has stopped the project, as I mentioned, and we're looking for other alternatives, but I, I hope to prevail in the end for the good of the City of Los Angeles.
The other question that I'm sure has occurred to a lot of people who've been following this discussion is, what about the healthcare for Billy and for any other elephant that might be put in a sanctuary or whatever? The healthcare infrastructure right now, of course, is at the zoo in Griffith Park. What kind of care and what kind of cost would that be if you were to move Billy someplace else?
Well, that is true, we're going to study that. And also, I know recently at Paws, which is the West Coast equivalent, in Tennessee there is a sanctuary, a 27-year-old elephant died. So it's not all necessarily perfect. I know sometimes they keep them enclosed in their own spaces, they don't necessarily roam around as much as you think, they're not just out there, they are in a more of a controlled fashion. But all this would be looked at in our study as the committee moves forward.
Over the years, I have seen you, even when you were not in elective office, at the zoo many times, lurking in the background, watching the operation. I think you had acknowledged that over the past 15, 20 years, there have been some problems at the zoo that have needed addressing.
Absolutely, and I remember as a child going to the old Griffith Park Zoo where, where between this camera and I was the fence of where the elephant exhibit was, and this is the old zoo by the merry-go-round, and they, they came to the new zoo, which is now the new zoo in 1965, created a space, but now, after many years, they've studied and created a greater area. I wish we had done this long, long ago. I'm sorry that animals have died in, in the Los Angeles Zoo, just as we have deaths in our own lives. But there's an important lesson to learn, they are important to be able to create a space that will welcome them, so that the people can learn about their plight in nature, which is so important, under the direction of the American Zoological Society. I think it's real important to have that there. And I also want to talk about the staff that's there now, the veterinarian, the chief veterinarian, the zoo director, the individuals who work it, they are so committed and they are so caring that every city resident is proud, would be proud of them for their efforts they would do.
Before we get to another topic for the very last minute, quickly, how's the gorilla habitat working out at the zoo?
Oh, wonderful, you should go and see them.
I have?
It's especially, yeah, come again, especially this time of year. Come earlier in the day, because late in the day, the, the sun goes away a little bit earlier and it gets time, but you like to kind of get back inside. They love their new exhibit there, and it's fascinating to see them interact with each other and look and stare at us.
Finally, for the last 60 seconds, we've been talking about Griffith Park, you've brought up a couple of times other things there. What about the light display this year?
Oh, it's a fabulous light display, thanks to the ever, the Department of Water and Power and community activism. They've had two weeks of all walking, no cars, next week, they're going to start the cars, there'll be a, a ability to drive through, but they've had up to 19,000 people on one night to come and walk through the beautiful Crystal Springs Drive there between the zoo parking lot and Park Central. And another treat, Jack, is if you go out on a Saturday or Sunday between 11:00 and 4:00, go to the historic merry-go-round where Walt Disney used to take his daughters, and ride on the merry-go-round, hear some wonderful, wonderful, wonderful holiday music that comes on that organ right there, then the player piano, right at the historic merry-go-round in Griffith Park. A great day, great treat. In the evening, go to the observatory and see the stars.
I've done all of those things and I love it. Not as much as you do, because you're such a proponent.
Oh, no, and if you ever want to go hiking, meet me at about, see, at 5:45 at the Charlie Turner Trailhead in, in the observatory parking lot, see the beautiful rides of the sun in the city.
Well, I'm usually somewhere else at 5:45 in the morning, but I appreciate the invitation.
You're at KFWB.
Exactly. District four council member Tom LaBange, thanks so much for coming in and talking with us on Council Week.
Thank you, everybody, happy holidays.
Again, the council voted to halt construction on the elephant exhibit pending further review in the Arts, Parks, Health and Aging Committee headed by Council Member LaBange. You can listen to city council meetings, as well as committee and commission meetings, on the telephone by using the city's council phone system. In the downtown area, dial 213-621-CITY. In West LA, dial 310-471-CITY. For the San Pedro area, dial 310-547-CITY. And in the San Fernando Valley, dial 818-904-9450. Just follow the recorded instructions for the meetings you want to hear. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. Remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10:00 AM. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 AM. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 AM and 6:30 PM, and on Sunday at 9:30 AM. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending December 5th, 2008. On behalf of Ted Lynn and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Clamps.
Clamps.
Power screwdriver.
Power screwdriver.
Now, for the moment of truth. To replace streetlights anywhere in the city of Los Angeles, call Operation Bright Lights today.
El estar preparado en caso de emergencia es responsabilidad de todos. Sin embargo, para las personas con discapacidad es especialmente crítico que tomen los pasos necesarios para asegurar su supervivencia. En Los Ángeles aproximadamente 1.2 millones de individuos tienen algún tipo de discapacidad. Puede que sea usted, tal vez un vecino o un compañero de trabajo. Hay tres pasos importantes al prepararse para una emergencia. Primer paso, tener un kit de suministros de emergencia en casa, en trabajo y en el auto. Si tiene niños, asegúrese de que su escuela tenga un kit de suministros para ayudar a su niño en caso de una emergencia. Paso número dos, cree un plan de emergencia familiar y practique, practique y practique. Asegúrese de incluir a todos los miembros de la familia y contactos fuera del estado en todos los ensayos. Además de preguntar sobre el plan de emergencia de la escuela de su hijo o hija. Y el paso número tres, entérese y manténgase informado sobre los diferentes tipos de emergencias que pueden ocurrir en su área. Debe asegurarse de poder sobrevivir por un mínimo de tres días con agua, alimentos y cualquier medicamento o equipo necesario que utilice para su discapacidad. Su kit de suministros de emergencia debe incluir copias de documentos importantes como tarjetas de seguro médico, recetas para medicamentos o anteojos, instrucciones sobre cómo operar su equipo específico, licencia de conducir, documentos financieros y fotos. Para su mascota o animal de servicio, asegúrese de incluir alimento extra, agua, golosinas, medicamentos, botiquín de primeros auxilios, collarina adicional con placa de identificación y un arnés o correa extra. Solo usted sabe qué lo puede preparar y ayudar tanto a usted como a su familia en caso de un desastre. ¿Está usted preparado? Para mayor información, por favor comuníquese con el Departamento de Discapacidad o el Departamento de Administración de Emergencias del Ayuntamiento de Los Ángeles, al llamar a los números en pantalla o al marcar el 311.
L.A. City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Wednesday, December 10, 2008. We are here in the John Farrow Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., except for the first Friday of the month, which we're usually at Van Nuys City Hall, in our efforts to bring City Council meetings closer to all Angelinos. I want to thank all the members of the Council who are here on time, pursuing the Council rules. Those are Council members Alarcon, Gruel, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Rosendahl, and Wesson. Council President Eric Garcetti, and we are awaiting a quorum right now. We are waiting two more members, and the following members are late: Councilmember Han, Councilmember Reyes, and Councilmember Smith. The three of you, if you please come down. We do have Mr. Zine and Mr. Weiss excused today, as well as Mr. Cardenas excused, and Ms. Perry is excused to arrive at 11:15. So, again, we need Mr. Smith, Ms. Han, and Mr. Reyes to join us as soon as possible. In the meantime, we want to welcome members of the public that are here in Council chambers, as well as those who are viewing us on Channel 35, which is LA City View, broadcasts us throughout the city's cable system, and rebroadcasts us at night. There are two other ways to follow your Council meetings, and one of them is online at la-city.org, where there's a wealth of information at our city's homepage on city services and other things. And if you go there, at la-city.org, you can also catch live webcasts of our Council meetings, and then go also and see any of our archived footage of our web stuff as well. We also, lastly, can commend to you the Council Phone Service, which is a way to use your telephone to listen into the Council meetings. The number for that is 213-621-CITY. That's 213-621-CITY. And just punch through the prompts, and you can listen into any of the Council meetings or our committee meetings as well. Lastly, our agendas are available online at la-city.org, hearing Council, or at the City Clerk's Office, 72 hours in advance, or 24 hours in advance for special meeting items. That is, again, la-city.org. And if any of the items have not yet had a public hearing, just fill out a speaker card in the back, and we'd be happy to hear your comments on that. Or for the section of our meeting, which is for our general comments, that is for items not on the agenda, but nevertheless under our jurisdiction. So, there's a final quorum call. Councilmembers Reyes and Smith, if you'll please join us as soon as possible, so we can begin our meeting. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Ms. Han moves, and Ms. Gruel seconds. Without objection, those minutes will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
All right, Mr. Smith moves, and Mr. Weezer seconds. Without objection, those will be approved as well. If we can run through the agenda, please?
On the regular agenda, items--
Thank you.
Items for which public hearings have been held, items 1 through 24. Item 1 is a commissioner. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Okay. First items, colleagues, 1 through 24. Do we have any specials on those items? 1 through 24.
Do you wish to hold 1 on the desk? That's a commissioner.
Yes, please.
And I believe 12 will be present today. There's an ord on number 2.
Let's hold 1 and 2 then on the desk. Any other specials, colleagues? Ms. Han?
Mr. President, I'd like to call item 13 special.
Thank you. Item 13 for Ms. Han. It's my favorite number, 13. Any other specials? If not, let's go ahead then, and please open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 25 through 39. 10 votes are required for consideration, and there are ordinances on 25 through 27.
Let's hold the ordinances on the desk for 12 members, and do we have cards from the public on any of these?
I believe there are cards on 29, 31, and 35.
Okay, we'll call those special for cards from the public. We'll open and close the remaining public hearings. Are there any colleagues who wish to call specials from 25 through 39? Mr. Weezer?
31, please.
31. Mr. Weezer? Any other specials? If not, let's go ahead and take up the balance then. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. We can go to the next item, please.
Next item is item number 40. That's a closed session. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please. Does anybody wish to hold 40 on the desk for closed session? Or, if not, we can move the budget and finance recommendation. If nobody would like to call that special, why don't we go ahead then and move the budget and finance recommendation on the settlement?
And for the record, I'm sorry, Mr. President, the settlement amount is $1,466,640--
Would we like to take that in closed session?
No one wanted to hear it. I'll move that we accept it.
Okay. Mr. Smith has moved that. If we can open the roll on that settlement, please. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, that is approved. If we can call the roll for the special meeting, please.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay. First item, please.
This is a one-item agenda, and the item is an item for which public hearing has not been held, and it is an ordinance.
Okay, let's go ahead and call that special for cards from the public, and let's continue that back into the regular meeting, and adjourn the special meeting. If we can take up the continuation agenda, please?
First item on the continuation agenda is item number 42, and that's an item for which public hearing has been held.
Okay, we'll call that special, please. Hold that on the desk. Item 43 through 46, please.
And then those are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, and there is an ord on item 43.
Okay, let's hold that for cards from the public. Ms. Han? 45 for Ms. Han. And we'll open and close the remaining public hearings, and if we can take up 44 and 46, please, prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, those are approved. And when Ms. Perry arrives, she's excused to arrive at 11:15. We will have 12 members, so we should be able to take up the ordinances that we've called special. That will take us to general public comment, which is for items not on our agenda, but nevertheless under the jurisdiction of the city of Los Angeles. And our first speaker is Zuma Dog. We have a clock to help guide comments, 2 minutes per speaker. Mr. Zuma Dog. Is he here?
Yes.
There he is. And then after that, Sky Anderson will follow him. Good morning.
Yes, good morning, Los Angeles City Council, and good morning, people watching at home. My name's Zuma Dog. I'm running for mayor of Los Angeles. Look for me on the ballot March 3. I'm officially certified, and you can read more about me at zumadogformayor.com. Also, LA Weekly, public access. It's been a big topic of debate here in chambers over the past year or so, and especially recently. Well, Council, I don't know if you're aware of this, but LA Weekly, many of you will be in this article as well with Zuma Dog. LAWeekly, laweekly.com. Tonight at about 8:00 p.m., you can check out the massive 5,000-page, 5,000-word article on the end of public access. Now, I'd like to talk a little bit about, as I was out gathering signatures, which, by the way, I guess it's not as easy to get signatures for a ballot. You might have heard that Mayor Villarreal has personally handpicked candidates for LAUSD Board. Well, he didn't get the signatures. Womp, 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 womp. But anyways, Zuma Dog got them. Here's some of the things that are important to people. First of all, the city's worse than Las Vegas. At least with Vegas, you have set odds. The way the city of Los Angeles runs this place, they do everything in violation of the charter, everything in violation of the planning, everything in violation of everything, and then it's up to you, the constituent, to have to sue. But the city knows most people don't have those resources, and they're not even aware of what's going on. And so that's how you have clear-channel billboards popping up all over the place, and everything in violation of the law, like these giant, you know, monstrosity condos that are popping up where they shouldn't. Something else people don't like, the fact that there's money from the federal and state government to provide services to the community through nonprofits. Zuma Dog feels that there's tremendous fraud, waste, and abuse, racketeering, corruption. The money doesn't make it into the community. It falls deeper into blight. Then you come back and tax people and say, "We got to tax you to fix the problem," and triple fees after you just squandered all the money. That's why it's Zuma Dog for Mayor to take back the city. ZumadogforMayor.com.
Our next speaker is Sky Anderson. After that is Clyde Williams. Good morning.
I'm Sky Anderson. I'm a community activist and a resident of Los Angeles. I went crazy yesterday, and I want to apologize particularly to Mr. Johnson. He was very gentle with me and this other police officer, and they're here to protect the public, to protect the City Council chambers, and they did that very effectively by not being abusive with me, but curtailing me. Two, I want to apologize to Ms. Wendy Gruel, because she didn't deserve all the mean things I said about her. I am mentally ill. I have a passion for public service, and sometimes I go crazy. As to people in this room, I really admire Mr. Rosa Rosendahl. He's always put the public first. I called him when he was head of Adolphia Cable. I said, "They're charging the producer $35 a fee on public access. That's not fair." And he says, "That's not fair," and he reduced it. He put the public first. About two years ago, I complained to Mr. Garcetti that the sidewalks in front of the Chinese Theater were being shut down, and that wasn't right. He defied the filthy rich studios, the publicity department, and they opened up the sidewalk most of the time. Now Hollywood is booming because they get so many tours. It's about public access. Public access, whether you know it or not, you're elected to serve the public. That's your job. People vote for taxes to support you serving the public. Public access is about serving the public. I'm a community activist. I get almost 30 minutes to tell them what I feel is wrong or right with our city. There are people that are new to Los Angeles. They come to do public access. They get new entertainers. They put that on their resume. Some of the stuff is wacky and rude, but it's public. Your job is to serve the public, and I'm asking you, please, to serve public access. Time Warner took over public access, and they've done everything they could to get rid of it, and they have. The cable companies, the land belongs to the people, the airways belong to the people, and the airways and the public access and the cable should be served the public. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Anderson. Clyde Williams is our next speaker. After that is Richard Kern. Good morning.
Hello, my name is Clyde Williams. I'm resident of 4115 Barrett Road in El Serena. Leader this morning, you will consider the Hazard Park. Remember, Rexon Park has a lease agreement with the Autry National Center for 11 acres of our Griffith Park. Remember also, Rexon Park has not enforced the terms and conditions of this lease agreement for 20 years. If they can't or haven't done it for 20 years, how can we expect Rexon Park to enforce any terms and condition for Hazard Park for 50 years? Contracts are only as good as the enforcement behind them. No enforcement, no contract. Please require Rexon Park to enforce all terms and conditions in the A&amp;C current lease agreement with Rexon Park, and require A&amp;C to comply with the merger agreement and save the Southwest Museum for the children of Northeast LA. Or declare a 20-year default by A&amp;C and take back the property and reduce the city's budget deficit. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Richard Kern. After that is Melrose Larry Green. Good morning.
Good morning. Richard Kern, AIDS activist, long-term survivor, medical cannabis patient, and advocate, poet and journalist, publisher of aidsright.org. Of course, I was pretty stunned yesterday to hear that the city is operating with an $80 million deficit, and that in terms of cost-cutting, everything needs to be put on the table. I have a suggestion to make that seems kind of obvious to me. Have you explored how much money you'd save by declaring Los Angeles a sanctuary city, and by refusing to allow LAPD assistance, which means LAPD expenditures, to current and upcoming DEA smash-and-grab politically retributive drug raids? Do we need to be paying for the helicopters circling overhead? Do we need to be paying for the cops to stand around and watch? Are we participating in the investigations? Do we need to be spending that money? Are you required to act as an instrument of the federal government contrary to the wishes of the people that you govern? Are you required to pay for the government's programs? All right? I want to give you a personal medical update today also, just because we're going to be friends over the next few months. A year ago, I was in the hospital. I just got out of the hospital for the second time since Halloween with a non-sacral resistant infection. Today, this week, I started on a new HIV drug cocktail, which includes iCentrus, a new category of HIV meds, and it's given me a little bit of diarrhea. I need to wear diapers today. But I tell you that not because I want you to have a sense of the hardship that it is to be here, but a sense of the joy it is to be here, to share my advocacy with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kern. Our next speaker is Melrose Larry Green, and after that is Oscar Johnson. Good morning, Mr. Green. A tie.
Good morning. Oh, yes, yes. Good morning, everybody. Yes, these are the colors of some school. Not where I went to school, but I don't know what school it is. What colors are these?
It's Cal. Mr. Weezer is--
Is it Stanford or Cal? Okay.
Cal.
Purdue. Okay, Boilermakers. Let me tell you why I'm here this morning. First of all, I ran for mayor, and I ran for City Council, and I lost. I ran against many of yous in this room. And one of the things I learned from running for office was how to get signatures to get on the ballot. I was distressed to learn in today's paper that Ben Austin did not qualify, because the person that got him the signatures got them in the wrong district. And I never thought I'd be standing up here saying that I did what I did, but in the last election cycle, I garnered about 1,400 signatures for people to get on the ballot. All of you around this horse, you know how difficult it is to get your signatures to get on the ballot. So I, Melrose Larry Green, am humbly coming down here to tell you that if you ever need someone to get signatures for not just getting on the ballot, but for speed bumps, stop signs, anybody in the community, contact Melrose Larry Green over at melrose@earthlink.net. I never thought I'd be doing this, but it's fun. It's kind of like going fishing. Unlike some cities in the United States, where there's a lot of corruption, the city of LA is now corruption-free for many, many years. I enjoy this City Council. I enjoy the city charter. And one thing about Melrose Larry Green, I talk myself in the third-person era, I play by the rules. And I think what happened to Ben Austin is very unfair. I think that this council ought to look into this. Ben Austin's a good guy. Deserves, I think, a do-over, because this is a real technicality. Something really went wrong, and I want to offer my services to hopefully get Ben Austin on the ballot for a very important seat on the Los Angeles Unified School District Board. Anyway, I'm out of time. That's it. Melrose Larry Green. The cat is doing fine. Tom Labange, we had a great Christmas party Friday. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Oscar Johnson is our next speaker. And after that is Dejean Cote. Cote?
Hi, my name is Oscar Johnson. I was speaking on behalf of Los Angeles about our Los Angeles Police Department. We should stop police misconduct, police brutality. We should form a government that should be independent of what this government we have now. The government that we have over us is the police department. We have people of us that are not of our race, that have authority over us. The independence, we have three major parties, political parties in America, political party, Democrat Party, and the Independent Party. Independent Party is a party not associated with larger entities, independent, subsidized, dependent on constituents or other interests. But we have the Republican Party and the Democrat Party. They are un-American parties. We are American citizens, but we're not governed by American government. The American government is the Constitution of the United States. But we have been proven before that the members of the Republican Party and the Democrat Party, they are communism, and they are socialist people in the party. We need fair investigation of the people that are in charge over us. We should know who we have in charge over us. This country have gone to socialism and capitalism and communism. We need work. We need industry. We need better schools. We need better buses on the bus line. We need fair government. The future should look towards truth and justice for tomorrow. If we don't look for truth and justice for tomorrow, tomorrow will be the same day as today. Lies to see and broken promises from all areas of government. We need a fair government. We need to do more for the homeless. Stop the genocide of the African-American people, though. Create better bus service on the bus line. Stop government waste. End corruption in government. End illegal immigration. Stop drugs from coming to America. Get drugs out of speech laws in Los Angeles. Stop drugs from being grown in America.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dejean Cote.
Good morning. I'm Dejean Cote. I reside and vote in the city's 4th district. As you know, there were a number of raids on medical cannabis collectives in Los Angeles last week. Your actions, or your lack thereof, speak volumes to the estimated 150,000 legally-qualified patients that are accessing the medical cannabis dispensaries throughout our city. I come before you this morning to urge you to reconvene the city's working group on medical cannabis. Let's get sensible regulations in place as soon as possible. It's far more expensive to ignore this issue than it is to do something about it. I urge Councilmember Zine's office, as well as others of you, to please speak with me about your opportunity to testify before the House Judiciary Committee on this issue of DEA interference on our state's laws. And let's please make LA a sanctuary city for medical cannabis patients. Let's see that no more LAPD resources are wasted on DEA raids on harmless, law-abiding citizens. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cote. Our next speaker is Reverend Patrick Duff, and after that is Arnold Sacks. Reverend Duff, Arnold Sacks, good morning.
Good afternoon. Good morning. Nice to see you back, Mr. Garcetti. Came to you yesterday, explained a little bit about the DEA raid that happened on my church, where machine guns were used to come in and steal property. On my shirt is a man named Halley Slasiay. A lot of people probably remember Halley Slasiay. He went to the League of Nations, and he asked the League of Nations for help, because he didn't have the weaponry of Italy when Mussolini was attacking Ethiopia. And when he went for help, he made a speech, and the speech is actually a song by Bob Marley called "War." And basically, the speech is until the philosophy of one man or one race is inferior, and the other's inferior, then we're always going to have war. Well, that being said, I mean, Officer Gonzalez of the LAPD was one of the main people who was involved in the raid, asking questions, stealing stuff from our church, putting people in handcuffs-- in handcuffs. Our main security guard, just to let everybody know, has been a security guard for 15 years in the city of Los Angeles and has never had a complaint against him and never done anything wrong. But they disarmed him and told him they were going to put him in jail for five years for being a security guard. Now, I don't know if anybody knows, but on La Brea, 812 La Brea, a person was shot and killed, a security guard, unarmed, about two months ago. So the DEA has left my church helpless, like Ethiopia with Italy. So as a Rastafarian, I can only say, we need help. I can't have people come in with an MP5 with a woman like yesterday who has epilepsy in there, okay, or the young man that was in a wheelchair here yesterday who figured out that we are in the state of California. I can't have them putting a gun to their head. I can't do it. You know, you got to help us. There's got to be some way you can help, and a way you can save money. Please.
Thank you very much. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker. After that is Phil Gennerjohn.
Good morning, Arnold Sacks. I quickly also wanted to address for a second the L.A. Unified School District fiasco. But I also want to point out that—and I'd like to quote Board Member Julie Kornstein in L.A.'s—in the L.A. Times yesterday. She characterized the anticipated buyout as a dreadful misuse of public funds. Oh, contraire, Ms. Kornstein. The dreadful use of—misuse of public funds is paying some knucklehead 400 grand to start with, then including $65,000 expense account and a $3,000 a month housing fee. But the good news is that the governor of Illinois was just arrested in a pay-for-play scheme. And according to the article that I'm reading from the Press Telegram, he curses like a sailor, so he's another ex-army man—or ex-military man, and he was only looking for $250,000 to $300,000 a year job. You could already save $150,000 by hiring him, and he'll probably be available in 10 to 20. I'd also like to now address a little bit of MTA and their logic. You may not have heard, but the MTA has a wonderful rule. Just found out about this in the last board meeting, and luckily, our representative stepped up to question this. They pay $1 million to firms that have their bids rejected. Now, there's some accounting for you. MTA rolling in dough, cutting services, can't cover their operations, and they're paying million-dollar fees to companies that have their bids rejected by MTA. Thank goodness that our representative stepped up and said, "That's wrong." Oh, wait, they didn't say, "Jack, thanks for your answers, your time, and your attention."
Thank you. Phil Gennerjohn is our next speaker. Excuse me, sir. Our next speaker is coming forward. Phil Gennerjohn. And then after that is Daniel Wright. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm here today to talk about illegal immigration. Unfortunately, I live in a city, and in a state, and in a country where most of the elected leaders are not interested in discussing this. Quite honestly, they act like they prefer it would go away. Illegal immigration is a moral crisis, a legal crisis, and a financial crisis for our country. It is a moral crisis because the United States of America cannot afford to look bad in the eyes of the world. At this very minute, there are tens of thousands of people waiting in lines at U.S. embassies across the globe, just hoping and praying that they can get into that building, fill out those papers, and then just maybe, maybe if they're lucky, they'll get to be American citizens. It's a slap in the face to these people and an insult when we allow tens of millions of people to come here without permission and continue to live here. It harms America's image, and it harms America's standing in the eyes of the world. Illegal immigration is a legal crisis because nonenforcement encourages chaos and anarchy. People start to say, "Hey, they didn't enforce that law. Maybe they won't enforce the next one." It's a terrible message to send. Illegal immigration is a financial crisis. The children of illegal immigrants flood our schools, threatening to bankrupt our educational system. Illegal immigrants run to hospitals and emergency rooms for free medical care. They also go to government departments and get welfare. And every dollar that is taken up by illegal immigrants is dollars that should be used for American interest, American citizens. And I'm not afraid to say this. It is quite common for people who align themselves on the other side of the aisle from me politically to say things—to point fingers and to call names. They like to say, "You're a racist. You're a bigot. You're a hate monger. You're a fear monger." Well, I'm here to defend myself and millions of other American citizens who feel otherwise. I'd like to tell you about some of my friends. My friend Pishut from Thailand, my friend Alam from Bangladesh, my friend Jessica from El Salvador, Huang Chi San, a Chinese girl from Taiwan who I dated. I've lived with and worked with and even come to love some of the people who have immigrated this country. America's a big-hearted country, and we can't accept more immigrants. We just can't accept all of them. My name's Phil Gennerjohn, and I'm running for mayor.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Daniel Wright. After that is Walter Bectel. Good morning.
Good morning. Daniel Wright, on behalf of the Friends of the Southwest Museum Coalition, on the web at www.friendsofthesouthwestmuseum.com, or join the debate at wwwblackhatblog.wordpress.com. Councilmembers, the recent revelations of mismanagement of museum assets entrusted to the care of the Museum of Contemporary Art Board of Trustees has caught fire at the Los Angeles Times and on culture blogs across the city. There have been calls upon Mayor Vierigosa and Council President Garcetti to step in to assure that Moca remains at its location in downtown L.A. Perhaps this sounds familiar, as Mayor Vierigosa responded to similar calls and made specific promises to assure that the Southwest Museum would remain at its location in the historic Arroyo Seco when he ran for office. The Moca scandal involves mishandling of financial matters. Mrs. Nimoy is quoted in the Times as having left the Moca board when the majority refused to conform their financial behavior to museum standards. The Autry and its accountants are violating Financial Accounting Standards 116 and 117 by booking on its balance sheet a bequest in Mrs. Autry's will that has no guarantee of being paid until Mrs. Autry's will is admitted to probate, and there is no will contest. I've distributed to you today Autry's latest financial balance sheet. I have pointed out how—previously—how 2/3 of the balance sheet consists of Mrs. Autry's uncertain bequest. When you subtract out about $100 million of that bequest and $40 million of the value of the buildings, the balance sheet reveals that only $2 million in cash is available for operations. $11 million has been collected for building expansion, and about $10 million of this council's giveaway of the Griffith Park land lease. Yes, you can see your land lease on this balance sheet. This sheet shows that Autry has very little cash after five years of fundraising to build the expansion in Griffith Park. There is a better way. Our sensitive expansion proposal for keeping the Southwest Museum where it is costs an estimated $40 million. Please give that consideration as a reasonable alternative when this project comes before you. Thank you.
Thank you. Walter Bectel is our next speaker, and then Jim Dimo. The first one is Walter Bectel, and then you, sir.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to reiterate something I talked about already, about the use—illegal use of my intellectual property, people who were responsible copyrighting that. It says in a federal court case, Duquesne versus Sugarman, 1977, 566 F2D, page 817, that high-ranking officials must be held to a greater standard of the knowledge of law. It's not incorrect for me to suggest that Mr. Weiss's people, over whom he has jurisdiction, are responsible here because we know that many of them—most of them that I knew were the copyright lawyers who were allowing the copyright of property, and they know that these sort of things are termed as eavesdropping or illegal wiretapping. Mostly, before wiretapping, it was just eavesdropping. And I also quoted to you from Samuel 12. I can re-quote that again to remind you. Samuel 12:5, it starts and it says, "And David's anger was greatly kindled against the man, and he said to Nathan, 'As the Lord liveth, the man that hath done this thing shall surely die, and he shall restore the Lamb fourfold because he did this thing and because he had no pity.'" And Nathan said to David, "Thou art the man." You gave what my intellectual property to these repulsive people, drug dealers and gangsters. You didn't want to take of your own stuff because you knew what they were, so you decided to take from somebody else. You took from me. So certainly, as what happened here to David is going to what happens to you and your people.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jim Dimo. Good morning.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jim Dimo. I am a candidate for mayor of Los Angeles, and I went 15 minutes before 5 o'clock on the 3rd of December. And because I don't have 20 signatures, they told me I'm out of the race. That's not fair. I went and collected over 1,000 signatures later on, and went yesterday, actually. They refused to accept them. They told me the city council is the only one who could help me to be on the ballot by accepting all these 1,000 signatures. I have prepared a declaration here, and I hope everybody got mine. As mayor of Los Angeles, I'm going to turn the city of Los Angeles into a big diamond, sparkling diamond. No more homeless. The streets are going to be crystal clean, and everybody is going to be self-employed. I have an invention, which I'm going to give to the people of Los Angeles, and that invention will employ, actually, all American people all across the United States. Right now, I'm poor like a church mouse. I was robbed by the city, by the county, by the state of California. I lost property which is worth more than $100 million, and I'm—I am actually almost homeless. I live in my son's apartment with my wife, and that's not fair. I'm going to get all my property back real soon, and I would like the city council to approve my—to approve my petition to become the mayor, to be on the ballot, actually. That's all I'm here for, and thank you so very much, and have a beautiful day. God bless you.
Thank you very much, and thank you to all members of the public for their public comment today. We can take up the items that have been called special. I'd also like to send 40 forthwith if there's no objection. And so if we can take up the first item, that is our commission nomination. And if Mr. Angulo would like to come forward, and I will—why don't you come to the table all the way through? And I'd like to recognize Mr. Reyes, who is the chair of our Planning Land Use Management Committee for the nomination for this East L.A. Area Planning Commission. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. First, I want to thank Ms. Angulo for serving the city. I know he has extensive, practical experience working with real estate, but he has also an incredible perspective, given his professional experience and the positions he has held. Perhaps you can share with my colleagues the reasons for wanting to be on this committee and what you bring to the table to support our city.
Sure. My experiences began with the Mexican-American Legal Defense and Educational Fund, where I served as Director of Development for that organization. Soon after that, I left Maldeff. I joined the National Association of Latino Electoral and Independent Officials, where I had ample opportunities to work with elected officials, as yourselves, on many issues, including sustainable development and creating healthy and vibrant communities. But in addition, I have personal experience in working a family business in terms of doing development work in the city of Whittier and other regions.
I want to thank Ms. Angulo for stepping up. It is important to have individuals that understand the street-level concerns, the neighborhood-level concerns, but have a perspective that helps move this international—
Thank you.
I'm struggling here.
Yeah, I didn't know if you were continuing. Get a little water. Go ahead.
But I just wanted to emphasize that, as an international city, we need these perspectives that helps us deal with some very difficult challenges. So I welcome you, like to encourage an eye vote, and accept Ms. Angulo's candidacy for this committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have Mr. Weisar next, and then Mr. Rosenthal. Mr. Weisar.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much, Mr. Angulo, for your willingness to serve, and I am very impressed with the number of organizations you've worked with to foster better life for all Americans, and the work you've done is very impressive. And I think you bringing your perspective to our local community is going to be a very good one, a beneficial one for all our communities. I believe someone like yourself understands our communities, understands their needs, and understands the importance of making sure that all voices are heard in the decisions you're about to make. And I just wanted to raise—and I know we've had this conversation before, but in my district, 14th Council District, we have a lot going on in Boyle Heights, a lot of redevelopment, a lot of excitement about the future with the Gold Line coming in, a new police station, a new high school, and I think it presents the opportunity for investment now, something that we haven't seen in a very long time. And not too long ago, we had a community planning process where we invited the community to come talk about all the new projects coming into the community, public and private, and to talk about what we all envisioned for the community in the future. And I think it's a process where we want to see, obviously, your basic amenities, but also we're looking for continued investment, and I think we're on the right trial there. In the northern part of my district, you know, we recently passed a hillside ordinance that will provide for more safety and preserve the aesthetic views of the hillsides. I know Councilmember Ed Reyes and I are very concerned about the density that may be developed. That was actually targeted for growth during the height of the real estate market, and so throughout our district, we're seeing different opportunities and challenges. And with your work that you've done, I know you have your hand on the pulse of the community, and that's a very good one. So I just have one question, and that is, in terms of planning issues, what do you think are some of the issues that you're interested most and that you would look out for as a planning commissioner?
Well, definitely. As a resident of Lincoln Heights, I saw the Gold Line being built and transverse all the way to Pasadena, and I saw a lot of development along the transit notes of that that the Gold Line created. And so a lot of great development in terms of building around the Gold Line stations to increase the number of housing, affordable housing, and also commercial. And I think it's a great opportunity now that the Gold Line is being extended to East Los Angeles and traversing Boyle Heights, and I think there's a great future for that region, especially because that region has been historically under—or not as economically developed as other regions, and I think this is a prime opportunity to take advantage of that.
And I think as we move forward in Boyle Heights, we also have to keep in mind the cultural benefits of providing more cultural opportunities in that area, developing it, but within mind of the local residents and the cultural opportunities that present with this new development. So I look forward to working with you, and thank you for your willingness to serve. I know you're a very active person, and thank you for the work you did on the NOAM Prop Aid Campaign, which I know is something that's very important geared to my colleague across the aisle here, Mr. Rosenthal. So thank you, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Speaking of that colleague across the aisle, Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning.
Good morning.
Just for the record, why do you want to do this?
I'm interested in doing this because I've always been interested in development and planning. I think that the community, first of all, needs to be engaged in how you develop the communities and how you engage prospective builders in the community, because at the same time, we have to have a fine balance. We have to have smart development, one that takes into consideration environmental issues and also takes into consideration the reality that we need more housing, but at the same time, knowing where to build those housing, and especially knowing how to mitigate the potential challenges that might come with the housing.
Well, we're looking forward to that. On a more personal note, in your bio, I see that you've been an activist in community affairs, and you've also been active in Honor PAC. What's that?
It's a political action committee that focuses on assisting in developing Latino-LGBT political leaders.
And today—is a day without a gay, but yet you're there, and I'm here, and there are a lot of folks around the council here who are openly gay that are here because we're serving the people, even though maybe we shouldn't be today, but we're here.
Well, definitely. One of our mantras is to encourage Latino political leadership, and this is what really the organization stands for.
And just for my colleagues' benefit, there are a lot of gays here in the room, but we're not taking the day off, but we want to honor ourselves and honor every gay person in America, and we also want to show our displeasure with that whole issue that happened in the ballot. But you know, we're everywhere, we're engaged in everything, we love our country, we love— But you know, we're everywhere, we're engaged in everything, we love our country, we love one another here, and I just want to make sure that the public understands that we're serving the public at this very moment. And I want to thank you for stepping up to the plate and being a positive role model for everybody.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, and Javier, congratulations on the nomination. And your past experience and work speaks for itself and clearly qualifies you for this nomination. I'm very pleased that you put yourself forward. Half of my district would be affected by the East Los Angeles Planning Commission, and my constituents feel very strongly, as most Anselinos do, about land use. It's probably the most passionate issue because it affects where we actually live in our neighborhoods. And so I wanted to walk through just a couple of things, because I think it's important in this confirmation process for folks to hear where you're coming from. I'm sure, you know, you share many of the same perspectives that they do, and certainly the work that we've done. And I want to praise Mr. Weisar and Mr. Reyes for the hillside ordinance in Northeast L.A., which was really important, the protections that existed in other parts of the city for open space in those hilly areas now will apply to Northeast Los Angeles. And you're coming in right after that's been passed, and good work that happened on that. A couple of years ago, Mr. Reyes and I, our staffs organized with the Cypress Park and Glassell Park communities, the Great Cypress Park-Glassell Park Walkabout, which was essentially a couple hundred people that went out there and went on a walk to see what do the streets feel like from a pedestrian perspective, not from a car perspective. They took photographs, they measured cracks on the sidewalk, the length of the side, or the width of the sidewalk, what it was like to have a wall instead of a cafe or something else that encouraged people to feel safe and be out there. And one of the things we'd love to do is to build on, I think, what the data we got, to make more walkable streets. So looking at the East L.A. Area Planning Commission kind of footprint, what can we do to make those streets? In some places, they're very vibrant, you know. Chavez is probably the most walkable street anywhere in in Los Angeles, so with Broadway and other places. But what can we do to make it a more pedestrian-friendly city? And what would you do as a commissioner to do that?
Sure. First of all, I'm a hiker, I'm a backpacker. I like to escape and go out to the local mountains. We have excellent recreational areas here in the seat of Los Angeles, including Griffith Park. I think one of the things that we need to do in order to make more walkable communities is essentially create safe communities. Make sure that there's proper lighting in the walkways, in the sidewalks, but also work with our commercial businesses and also our residential businesses to make sure that, first, that there is access to the businesses, easy access to the businesses from the sidewalk. There's also a need for, you know, especially with trees and also landscaping, to make you, you know, just to make it a pleasant time to walk in the streets. But I think most of all is taking advantage of the transportation, transportation projects that we have to encourage people to walk to these nodes of transportation, for example, walk to the Gold Line. I know that in Lincoln Heights, one of the projects they did is they, in all the major streets and all the major walkways leading to the Gold Line have been lined with trees. And we did see a lot more pedestrians in that way. But I think I run and reemphasize that creating safe communities would also, would be probably the most important to ensure people that if they walk in the sidewalks, that they'll be safe to do so.
Yep. Two other questions, and along those lines, that we look forward to, you know, when this project comes forward, whatever you can do to push for that streetscape element. Oftentimes, we look at the renderings and we forget, you know, what it's like at that streetscape element. What are they going to do for the sidewalk? Can they go back a couple feet to make it wider? That sort of perspective would be great, and I appreciate those comments. Second, people care about two things also in Northeast Los Angeles, I think. The historical, you know, legacy of these communities, which are beautiful and have all these old homes and apartments, but also gentrification, which has happened in the last, you know, five, 10 years, where we've seen, a lot of us who've had families for generations there as well, we see some of the familiar faces and people really being moved out because they can't afford to keep up. And so the tension there, why I put those together, is sometimes we want to preserve what's there, but we also know to keep things affordable, we may have to build in order to bring affordable housing in for folks that increasingly can't pay market rate anymore where their families have for generations. What thoughts do you have on how we can address that through our planning and land use?
Sure. I'm very acute to the idea of, I live in a 1905 colonial revival house in Lincoln Heights, and my partner works for the Los Angeles Housing, Los Angeles Housing Partnership. And the goal is really to create housing that is in line with the character of the community. You can't necessarily build a steel and glass structure next to a neighborhood that's turn of the century. So we really can develop great housing and, you know, four- or five-story housing in an area that is historical by incorporating historical or historical designs or elements into that housing and making it very flush with the rest of the community.
Yeah, absolutely. Appreciate that. And one final question. One of the things that we've seen is also in East L.A. planning, area planning commission footprint, is independent businesses have continued to stay vibrant. But one of the things they run into is obviously a lot of red tape, and they feel like sometimes planning and other requirements are so broad. In Echo Park, there was a bakery that was initially required. It was just a storefront former church, very small, in Echo Park Avenue, that would have had to do underground parking and a giant grease trap, and it was literally just a woman who wanted to, had a dream of opening up a bakery. And we worked through that, but if you have any thoughts, or if you just want to take it as a point of advisement, wherever we can really help those independent businesses, it is a defining thing that we don't have a lot of chain stores, and that we can keep that, and independent entrepreneurs come in there. But any thoughts you might have in preserving that, making that a more human and easier process would be greatly appreciated, too.
Definitely. I think the rules and policies that were designed as part of the planning plan for the city of Los Angeles, I think those are, should be taken into consideration, but shouldn't be the final determination whether a project moves forward or not. I think in this, especially this difficult time where the economy is very sour, we should encourage business promotion or business development, and also encourage, encourage small business owners who want to open up a business in our community.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you, the mayor, for a great nomination, and thank you to our chair for shepherding it through.
Thank you.
Hi. We have one public comment card, Mr. Arnold Sacks. We already had public comment on this. Mr. Sacks, your card has been received. So members, this is not your time to speak, Mr. Sacks. The clerk informed me we already had public comment on this issue. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Sacks. So members, what we have before us is the nominee. So I ask the Madam Clerk to open the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right, so order. Congratulations. Thank you for your service to the great city of Los Angeles.
Thank you.
Next item. Forty-two out of order. Forty-two out of order, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to set this up. Our city controller is here today on this item, which concerns lawsuit and some critical items that are before us. I'd like to invite Controller Chick to come up and to give testimony at this time, and we can, I think part of this will need to do an open session and part in closed session, colleagues, but also defer to our budget chair, who took this up in committee. Thank you.
Ms. Chick, if you would take the center table. Welcome.
Thank you, council members. I am not here today to argue my point of view about the charter. I'm not here to argue why my audit of the City Attorney's Workers' Comp Program should go forward. I'm not a lawyer, and so I'm not going to get involved in charter interpretation. Now, the mayor has a lawyer, the city attorney has lots of lawyers, some of them are in the room, and the council, at various times, I believe, has hired its own attorney and has attorneys who the city attorney advising you. I do not have an attorney, and the controller's office is being sued by the city of Los Angeles. So I'm here to argue with you, or to, not argue with you, that's totally wrong. I'm here to make my case.
Make the argument.
About why you should be authorizing me to hire, at public expense, my own attorney to represent me. There is a reasonable disagreement over the interpretation of a provision of the charter. And as with any dispute over language in a constitution, a statute, an ordinance, or a charter, it now needs to be resolved by the courts. You are part of, I'm being sued by the city. I'm being sued by you, and you're being represented by the person who has interpreted the charter that impedes me from fulfilling my charter mandated duty as I see it. The city attorney interprets the charter to prevent the controller from conducting an audit, a performance audit. There is a disagreement between two co-equal, we are equals in the eyes of the charter, two co-equal independent elected officials answerable to the public. And both of us have taken an oath to uphold what the charter tells us is our duty. And both of us have reasonable and legitimate points of view. It cannot be that one of them, the city attorney, gets to resolve that dispute. It is an obvious and blatant conflict of interest for the city attorney to use his authority to interpret the charter to prevent and block a performance audit of a program in his office. And likewise, it is a conflict of interest for the city attorney to now be advising the city council about this very dispute. And it would have been better if this could have been resolved without litigation. But the reality is that courts all the time resolve disputes over charter language. And for a time, it appeared that litigation could be, could have been avoided by a charter amendment to make clear that the charter gives the controller authority to audit all city programs. But that amendment is unlikely. The time passed for March, which was what the conversation had been about. And the dispute over interpreting the charter section now needs to be resolved by the courts. The media keeps characterizing this as a clash or a power struggle between two individuals. That is totally inaccurate. This transcends the people who fill those two offices. Now, we are both gone within six months. This is about whether the people of Los Angeles, the voters, the taxpayers, the people who live and work in this city want and deserve transparency and accountability over their taxpayer dollars, no matter where those dollars are housed. I am asking you to do what's been done for other elected officials on disputes that are about personal actions and behavior and accusations such as sexual harassment that cost the taxpayers well over $1 million, that this is money exceedingly well and appropriately spent, that I have a right to outside legal counsel paid for out of the fund that the CAO has for this very purpose. Thank you.
Thank you, Controller Chick. I'd like to recognize our budget chair, Mr. Parks, and then Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that in looking at this at the committee, most of the material, I believe, should be done in closed session. But I think the logical progression that I've come up with, and I would think that when the council made a decision recently not to put this on the ballot, my assumption was there was either clarity of the language or there was a view that we didn't need to get it clarified any longer, any further. The other view, I believe, is that the city attorney, and I disagree with Ms. Chick a little bit, is that wrote an opinion to a city council member in the mayor's office about this issue, not a conflict of interest about his office, it was about the placement of the gang unit in the mayor's office and whether these issues can be reevaluated. So it was not an issue that affected his office. He was really offering an opinion about a circumstance occurring in another part of city government. I think also, as we walk through this, it's clear that the charter gives responsibility to the controller to issue subpoenas and gives the authority of the police department to serve those subpoenas. There's also a section in the charter that says if you don't comply with the subpoenas, what are the, that there's a, city council sets by ordinance what the penalty is. But I think as we move forward on this, if historically that we believe that the city attorney, unlike any other attorney in the city, is the one that clarifies legally the wording of the charter, and that the city attorney gives us advice as it relates to how we conduct this business of the city, and even though attorneys outside of city government may disagree, the city attorney is the one that we rely on. And in some instances, we've been told that if you don't follow the city attorney's advice, you could actually individually be viewed as it relates to punitive damages by your actions. And that's why the city attorney's advice is important. I think as you move forward on this, if the city attorney's advice is that whether individuals, or Ms. Chick agrees or not, the city attorney's letter clearly states that this charter section does not give that authority. There can be a major disagreement, or as I mentioned to Ms. Chick yesterday, we agree to disagree, but it says clearly that this audit that she's asking for is not within the confines of her authority as the charter dictates. If that's so, we can logically walk down the path and say the subpoenas are either inappropriate or illegal, even though they've been served, so that we now have six employees that are under some threat of legal action as it relates to these subpoenas for noncompliance. Now, if we move forward in the sense, and I've never seen the city of L.A. ever give an employee money to sue us. So that's something, if we go back, and I've picked Mr. Smith's brain, who's been here as long as I have, we figured out the only case that we can think of was when Councilman Renardi, I believe, sued the CRA. And he sued them with his dime and his money, contrary to what the council rules were and the city attorney's opinion, and he ultimately won. So using that as a basis, it would appear to me that we, in moving forward on this, that that precedent is pretty well set, that the city attorney evaluates and gives us legal opinion, that if we follow that, it would appear that he has said clearly that these subpoenas are not within the purview, or this audit is not within the purview of the controller. The language that is in the issue of the charter, I think people, and I talked to Ms. Han recently, who said on the charter commission, I followed it as a city general manager, and she and I had the same opinion that when this was discussed as a issue, no one disagreed that the financial aspects of the charter were in place, because it was historically there. When it expanded to programs, there was a lot of discussion as to what that truly meant. And my recollection, and so does Ms. Han's recollection, is the word "department" was used to limit and the fact that elected officials within this city do not manage or do not run departments, they run offices. It was to clarify and leave out of any ability for an elected official to be, other than financial, audited by another elected official. That's what I remember about it. It was a longstanding discussion, and the clarity was in place by the use of the word "department." And so as we go forward on it, we do have six employees that have some jeopardy if Ms. Chick wishes to move forward on pushing this and as relates to seeking an enforcement against them, because the city council by ordinance has said your failure to comply is a misdemeanor. The issue is, if you also follow logically a trend of thought I've given you, if you don't have the authority, then are the subpoenas legal? Then it puts the employees in a position to where if this prosecution is sought at another level, which would not be the city attorney, but would be either the state attorney general or the district attorney, then who defends those employees? I believe that the only recourse would be to allow them to be defended by the conflict panel. It's unfortunate that they would have to go through that, because if we go through this very logically, the city attorney's opinion is what we stand on. If it says clearly that there is no basis, then we'd have to assume the subpoenas are not appropriate. And so with that, we did not make a decision at the budget finance, because it was not appropriately listed, so it's now appropriately listed. I think the issue is, that's the best that I could make an understanding of it. Also, in talking to the principals, as Mr. Smith and I talked today, I don't think we're at a point that mediation is in. at a point that mediation is in, is in the works, because I think people have drawn lines to the point that there's no separation. I think eventually it becomes a policy decision by the council to say, are we comfortable with the language as it's currently stated, or do we feel as though we put it on the ballot to alter it? The last thing I would suggest is we go to the court and allow them to interpret our charter when we've already heard what the city attorney has said. So we, it's a gamble either way, but I think if the premise I've given you is accurate, when we decided, and although I wasn't here, but I would have supported that decision not to go to the ballot, it would be clarity that we think that the wording is sufficient and that we agree that the city attorney's assessment of it is sufficient. That's my best analysis of it. And so we, and we did not get to it, but I would not recommend that we give money to a city employee to sue the city if that's a view that they have that's contrary to the city attorney's opinion, like all the rest of us. You go get your attorney and you sue in behalf of your point of view, but the city would not finance that. Well, he's only suing because of the issuance of the subpoenas. If the subpoenas had not been issued, we would not have legal action. Now, the city attorney has the ability to do this, but I would have hoped that the city attorney would have come to us and advised us ahead of time, had this been the only opportunity or prerogative, that we then would have endorsed it early on or said not to. But the only reason for the action by the city attorney is to protect the city attorney's employees on what they view as an illegal subpoena. Had the subpoenas not been issued, had they been withdrawn, we would not have a court case.
Our next speaker is Mr. Rosenthal.
It's fascinating, Mr. Parks, what you just said. This is, in my opinion, the historic moment. Where's Ernie Bernardi when we need him? I think the city attorney himself should come before our body and state his case like the Controller did. I must tell you, I was for putting it on the ballot. It didn't pass. And frankly, it's compelling when the city controller says now he's suing me and, and I need legal defense. That's also very compelling. And also, we're living in, in the worst budget crisis in our city's history, and the last thing I want to do is spend money on this issue when hopefully we can work it out in the sunshine right here in a discussion. So if the city attorney can hear me, I would like him to come down and, and present his case, similar to what the Controller did, so we as policymakers can kind of figure out where we go from here. Thank you.
Ms. Gruel.
Thank you. And colleagues, I agree, Mr. Rosenthal, we would love to not spend any, any money in a tight budget. We're making difficult choices in the last, just yesterday, on things we have to do. I think it was clear from how the Controller's presentation was, there is a disagreement between two of our elected officials. We did not get the votes to put on the ballot the, the language that the Controller had asked to be put on, on the ballot. And so we're in this, you know, chicken and egg kind of situation that we have here today. And it is about, it is about transparency. But I'm going to speak mostly about the position we're currently in, not about where you fit as to what you think the definition of a program is or not. If, and the one disagreement I have with Mr. Parks, although I agree with him on lots of things, the one part of the agreement is, in the Bernardi case, Bernardi decided to sue and got outside, you know, funds available to do that. In this case, Ms. Chick is responding to a lawsuit, yes, based on a subpoena, but responding to a lawsuit. But we have, as elected officials, in, you know, many instances, if someone gets sued, you have to be able to respond to it, no matter what you think the position is that person took, if you agree or disagree with that. And, and the choice was made by the city attorney to use, and I understand, related to the subpoenas, and those employees, yes, deserve the same, if, if this is going to court, the same kind of representation. And so if you, if you go through that logic, if those individuals should allow, to be allowed to have representation, then the Controller should be allowed to have representation at the same, same point in time. The only way to resolve this issue and resolve it is by the ballot or by going to court. There are lots of other suggestions that have been made to mediate for this particular one, but it's not just about the workers' comp and what's in the city attorney's office. It's about what was the interpretation of the charter. And as Ms. Chick indicated, there is a risk for, for her position. The judge could determine that in fact the city attorney was right and she was wrong or vice versa. But I do think in, in the interpretation of the charter, we have gone to the, the city attorney's office for the interpretation on the charter on a number of issues, and we have not always agreed. But in this instance, in the interpretation of the charter, he has a vested interest, that office has a vested interest. And so when someone has a conflict, we go to outside counsel and ask them to take on that responsibility. And we have voted on numerous occasions in the Budget Committee and others to provide outside counsel when there is a conflict by the city attorney's office because of one reason or another, we have given them outside counsel to do that. The Controller deserves the same kind of representation in this, no matter what your opinion is about the position that has been taken. And if we can resolve this quickly, and the cost may not be the $100,000 that Ms. Chick has mentioned, is that the, you know, is, is a cap. The hope is that this can go quickly and responsibly and that we will be able to resolve this issue without necessarily having to go to the voters, because that was not decided by this council recently. So it's the fair thing to do, it's a transparent thing to do, to resolve it so that there's no question and to give the same kind of representation to the Controller that we would give to either of us, a city employee, or even the city attorney's office by using outside counsel. So I would ask for an I vote to be able to do that. And I do know that we do, we have in the city attorney's office actually existing funds for outside counsel that could be used for this purpose.
Mr. Alacon.
Members, in, in 15 years in elected office, I have to say this is one of the most interesting situations we've found ourselves in. And it's, it's, I think, unnecessary but necessary. One of our responsibilities is to ensure that the charter has integrity and the, and understanding. An uninformed democracy is a democracy that is not functioning properly. And in this particular case, it's, it's, it's not a question of whether you're informed or not, it's a question of your opinion on the information. One word in the charter has caused a tremendous falderol about who has the power to do what. So clearly, this is a power play, but it is, it is a power play that I think is, that cries out for clarity. I believe that there is a third option, or actually a fourth option. One option would be to mediate and, and come up with something that we can all agree with. And I don't believe a politician should perform performance audits on another politician. That's my bottom line, although I have no problem with financial audits, which the Controller has power to do on any, any program that we have in the city of Los Angeles, any, any service, anything, any dollar that we spend, the Controller has the power to do the audits. I think it's disingenuous to publicly state that, that the council is fearful of audits when in fact we have, we are audited on a regular basis and we welcome those audits. On the performance audits, though, it has the tinge of, of conflict of interest, because if one, one Controller ends up running for mayor, they could do an audit on a council member who, who might want to run for, for mayor, or in, looking in retrospect, Mr. Hahn could have done an audit on the city attorney because he wanted to run for city attorney. I mean, there are all kinds of ugly ramifications. So I don't have a problem with the clarity. And because of that, I will vote in favor of, of the $100,000 allocation to allow this matter to move forward to court. But let me say this, the fourth option would be for us to hire an outside auditor to audit the city attorney's workers' comp program. And I would offer that as a, as an alternative that, that would resolve the issue immediately with the city attorney's office, and then we can, we can talk about a long-term mediation of the issue of, of the language of the charter, improving the language of the charter, presenting that to the voters at a later date, perhaps in November, but resolving the immediate issue and saving the money to the taxpayers with regard to the legal expenses. So with that, that's my offering. I will vote for this matter if, if we continue down this line.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
My understanding is that the city attorney, we are the clients of the city attorney, and I just want to know why. And I had voiced it out loud, why isn't he here? And I thank House of Rosenthal for asking him to come down. I think it is important for the whole public to see everyone's face in this discussion. According to the charter, he does work for us. He's supposed to be giving us advice. He were making decisions about political offices, politicians, so I'm wondering why he can't be here and give us that least.
We have Rich Llewellyn could come up and explain.
But Rich Llewellyn is not Rocky Delgado.
If I can respond to that one request, the city attorney is in Sacramento, which was scheduled long ago. And also, as an ethical matter, the Controller has alleged that there's a conflict of interest on the, her request for representation, and the city attorney cannot address that. He can talk about the lawsuit, which you've said except for closed session, but he cannot discuss the matter or not of representation for the Controller. She has alleged there's a conflict of interest, is an ethical problem, he cannot discuss that matter in closed or open session.
I'm calling Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I'm not very happy to be at, at this place. I don't think it reflects well on either of our citywide elected officials, if I can be frank. But I've been willing to work through this, because if this is really about wanting to get to the bottom of what's happening in any program, we've offered a number of ways forward. I think that, I've spoken privately about that same proposal of saying we can get an outside auditor tomorrow, that we could authorize to be coming in, that both, you know, the, the Controller could be part of a panel selecting, and we could at least click off that box, if that's very important to the Controller, which I believe it is, that's important to us, and, and the city attorney and anybody else should always be open to that. I, I agree with Mr. Alacon, we could take care of that. We could look at other mediation. We actually were part of trying to mediate between these two elected officials that were having these issues and put something forward. And our city legislative analysts worked very hard on something that did have consensus around this horseshoe that came down to the difference of, between an and and an or. Now, I respect the Controller saying that's not, that's not an insignificant and and or for her, but basically, it was such a wide open thing. I, I voted for it anyway, but for some folks, and I respect that, when it said or, it could have been, you know, we, we audit, you know, the, the gasoline you put in your car this morning. I mean, it could be wide open for anything. And I do believe in Mr. Alacon, it's not a reflection on any current personalities. It could be, it could not be, but I'm speaking dispassionately, that we don't want to open up politics through the powers that we have here, because that happens all the time. People who want to run against each other will use whatever powers they have to embarrass other people. So we're at a place now where taxpayer money, and just to be clear also, though, if we put on the ballot, that's taxpayer money too. That's not a free thing to do. Printing that up costs us some. It's in a city election, so it's a lot less than if it was a county election, but it still costs us money. So whether we pay today for up to $100,000 that we authorized for her to go forward or that, it was going to cost people money to resolve this issue, which is why I think mediation on the, on the constitutional or the charter issue was the right way to go forward. Now, I also respect that there's nothing that binds us, though, once we have a three-panel judge or whatever say, well, we believe this is the interpretation. We could all agree to that today, and the next council could just void that. So it's nothing binding. And maybe it does need to go to the, the court eventually. I would have liked to see this go for the voters. That aside, and it is clear to us that if this was, this is not a case of the city Controller suing. I'm upset with the city attorney's office for not coming to us about the outside counsel that they need to protect themselves. This, this council is sensitive, being bypassed on one side and have a gun to our head on the other. And that's not a good place for us to be. We, we are the policymaking body and we are the authorizer of money. So now that I said what I'm upset about, I think the right thing to do is to authorize this money forward. If this was any of us responding to a lawsuit, I don't know how I would have voted when, before, I know there was one that was alleged, this was before this council was in place, to be clear, for the public, when there was a sexual harassment suit brought against a member of the city council, and that wound up costing taxpayers up to $2 million to defend. I don't know if I'd go that far to say, yeah, go ahead. But when there's a legitimate suit going on, and I want to correct the Controller on one thing, where she said that we are suing her, we're not suing her any more than she's suing herself. Yes, we're part of the body of the city, but we did not authorize that suit to go forward in any way. It's being done without there having been a vote for us. And if there's money involved on the outside counsel, that should and must be here. And I want to be very clear to the city Controller's office on that. You don't just get to, to do that at a certain amount that is going to go over $100,000 to defend your people, which is the right thing for you to do, but the charter says that must come here. So we might go into closed session, discuss some of the roots of that, and we might have to go in closed session for the first time, and I know I'm going to hear some, some pangs of outrage from our very good deputy city attorney here, but we might have to do that without our city attorney, because as was mentioned, they can't comment on their own conflict. That is something where, where we had the wisdom in the last couple of years to hire a lawyer to give the council advice, and we do have our own lawyer who works for us in those cases, when the city and the people deserve the city council being able to get legal advice where there might be any conflict. So I would say we could go and do that if we need to, discuss some of this. But in the meantime, up to $100,000, probably about the same as the election would have cost, it's the right thing to do. I would ask my colleagues to support that today, but I think that we also need to hold the city attorney's feet to the fire about why there's other council that's being authorized without that ever coming here.
Just for clarification, Mr. Garcetti, is that a substitute motion for the committee report?
No, it's not.
There was no, there was no recommendation from the committee report, so we would.
But I'll make the motion.
I think I made the motion when I did, which I said we should.
Yeah, I thought you did before, so.
So, Mr. Garcetti now seconding it.
I support Ms. Gruel's motion.
And Mr. Alacon. Mr. Weisar, followed by Mr. Parks.
Thank you. And I'm just, issues like this are constantly going to come up in this city, and I think it was just premature, and I'm not even sure who served who first with subpoenas or who sued first, but it appeared to me at the last council meeting that we had, there were three proposals floating around. The original proposal that came out of the CLA's office, working with other people, other interested parties, a second motion that changed one word from and to, from or to and, and a third proposal recommended by Mr. Cardenas and I think Mr. Alacon. And the way policy is made is that council members and people having to vote on those items and decide need to understand it. And for many of the council members that day, it was my impression that they were seeing this issue for the first time. They're trying to understand it, trying to figure out what the impact of the different proposals mean, and trying to catch up on where we were with this whole controversy. Now, the way policy is made in many issues here often get continued. The votes weren't there for one proposal, but it doesn't mean that this council couldn't come back, come up with some consensus and speak to the Controller's office and the city attorney's office and come up with something to put on the May or March ballot. Well, actually, any, I'm not sure when the deadlines were, but we could, we could have come with, up with something else. And I'm not sure if anybody in this council is actually, or who the lead is in this council to speak with the Controller and the city attorney's office, but this just doesn't look right. I mean, there's an easy way to go and move forward, and that is come up with something that makes sense and have the voters vote on it. But for elected officials to be suing each other, it's nonsense, and we shouldn't go that route. I was, after we walked out of the last council meeting, I was under the impression that we'd be back here again, looking at what proposal we would want to put, put forward that had some consensus around it. Yes, we would, probably wouldn't come up with the 15-0 vote, but at least there'd be some consensus. And I would just hope that, I'm not sure who in our council's taking the leadership on this, but to go back and, and sit down again and see if we could come up with something and, and move forward. But to move forward and, and, you know, I would support, you know, the Controller having her funding to defend herself, but at the same time, I would want to get out of that path altogether. Because if we endorse this, and if that's the direction we go today, fine, but I'd rather just get ourselves out of that line, out of that path, and go back and do what we do normally, continue to discuss, and come up with policy that makes sense. That's how policy is made. We're never, you know, on the same page on the first time council members see this issue. Let's go back, somebody from this council, perhaps our budget chair and our council president should go and, and once again, work something out with the city attorney's office and the Controller's office, and come back with a proposal that we could all vote upon. But, you know, if the, if the Controller has to defend herself, I'm for that. But I'd rather much see something get us off that track completely and hopefully have, you know, our president and our budget chair go back and come up with something new.
Mr. Garcetti.
Just because you, the question was put out, Ms. Gruel and myself have been in communication as your elected representatives for about three months. The problem is, there's nothing left to resolve. The Controller won't agree to any of that language. So if to put something on the ballot without her agreement doesn't resolve the legal issue of them, the lawsuits back and forth, because she'll continue to pursue that action. It only works if she agrees. So that's what, that's the gun to the head piece, which I don't agree with and appreciate, but that's why we're in the position. It's not. It's not resolvable, Ms. Han, if I can just let Mr. Weisar know. I mean, it's not resolvable until we have agreement from her. And so we've been working very hard on that. I mean, we've had daily conversations. We've been doing that for months. I've been, you know, in consultation with our budget chair about that too. But it requires agreement from both sides. If you have people who won't agree, they go to court.
Mr. Parks, followed by Mr. Alacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I'd just like to clarify a couple of things that when we talk about the public voting, the public voted a while back on something called charter reform, which this language was in. So the vote has already occurred. I'd just like to also clarify on the examples that were used earlier about the Bernardi lawsuit and also about sexual harassment. I think the difference clearly in this case is the city attorney did not go forward on legal action until the subpoenas were moved forward. And the subpoenas are what's caused the issue. If the subpoenas were withdrawn, there'd be no legal action. So we have created a situation to where we're now saying, because you've moved forward on subpoenas, we're now going to pay, give you $100,000 to now defend your subpoenas. I think also, as Mr. Garcetti said earlier, this whole lawsuit issue is not about, I believe, the subpoenas. It's about clarifying two words, what are programs and what are performance. That's what this is about. And so we're going about a roundabout way to get to those two words. And I think we also need to reevaluate that if we ever are really interested in looking at workers' comp, it's not what's in the city attorney's office, it's the larger program. It's only a small part of workers' comp is in the city attorney's office. The bulk of it, 95%, is in the personnel department. And so I think if we get some clarity of what we're trying to get to, there could be an outside audit to look at it, but yet we wouldn't clarify program or performance. And I think also, to use the clarification that on this lawsuit, the same as others we've dealt with, the fact that an employee might do something that's viewed to be inappropriate is a different issue than this lawsuit. This lawsuit only came about about subpoenas being issued, in which it being interpreted by some is being inappropriately issued, and by others to mean they're appropriate. And it's not getting down to a sole issue. It's kind of clarified whether there is an ability to deal with performance. And all of the reasons that Mr. Alacon mentioned as concerns were part of the original debate during the charter reform, and why the word department was placed in there to allow people not to be threatened by others who could do performance audits, and they are also elected officials. And so I would then again say that if we're talking about $100,000, it is not an appropriate expenditure, in my mind, to give somebody $100,000 who has initiated an action in which the city attorney was merely protecting their employees. The other issue is, the city attorney did not seek the use of attorneys for the employees. The employees went to the outside, CAO for outside counsel, which is set up by the city council for that ability when there's a conflict. So all they did was attempt to get legal advice for themselves, which is appropriate. We use it all the time. But when a employee of the city initiates something, and there's an action in regard to it, that's where I think it's different than any other lawsuit that we have. The withdrawal of the subpoenas would make all of this go away, but the other side is we wouldn't clarify performance.
Mr. Alacon.
Members, I think this event has actually compelled us into one of the most interesting and articulate debates that I've heard since being on the ballot, and thoughtful debates and considered debates. We're at a point where it's a difference of opinion on one or two simple words in the charter. I happen to believe that the city attorney's opinion about the charter is correct, but I respect the controller's view that it is not. We can't resolve that. We know we can resolve that in the courts. However, the issue of the performance audit of the workers' compensation program is one that has been sidetracked here. And I think in deference to the city controller and the city attorney, we ought to move forward with that as our priority. And so I would offer a friendly amendment that we ask the CLA to come back with a report next week to tell us how we would go about getting an outside auditor to come in and audit, to conduct a performance audit on the city attorney's workers' compensation program, at the same time proceeding with the $100,000 allocation. I'm hopeful, quite honestly, that we will drive the debate further to the point where we can actually come up with proposals that the voters can support with a ballot measure that clarifies the charter. But in the meantime, let's do the work of our constituents to conduct a performance audit on a program that is managed by the city attorney, but by an outside auditor that is not politically affiliated, or I should say, an elected official. And I think that that would solve one of the issues. In the meantime, if the courts want to, if they want to pursue the issue, and the courts will get the clarification at a later point, I wish, I hope we can mediate so that that doesn't occur, but if it does, I'm satisfied with whatever results.
First, Mr. Parks.
Let's expand that to the entire workers' comp program and not just the small segment in the city attorney's office.
I believe the city controller already conducted a performance audit on the personnel function.
If that's so, but...
Well, if, if in fact there was no performance audit conducted on the personnel section, then I would have no problem with that, with it being all-inclusive.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alacon. Is there a second to Mr. Alacon's motion? The second by Mr. Parks, thank you. Ms. Gruel.
Thank you. And just to clarify before, are you suggesting that we, they come back with how that would operate and so forth, that there'd be an option? Okay, so that we're not deciding today what that's going to look like, okay? Just, I think it's important to clarify, as we talked a lot about the subpoena and why, the reason that there was subpoenas was because originally the controller had gone to the city attorney's office and said, I want to interview your employees about a management audit, and there was a refusal to do that. So it is, you know, as I indicated before, it's kind of pushing back and forth. So the subpoenas were issued because the controller did not get the response from the city attorney's office that she wanted to be able to interview those employees as part of a management audit. So if we want to say it's blaming the subpoena part of it, it's because the city attorney's office did not respond, and it's about transparency. So I think that's why, again, and that we are talking about the importance of, there were decisions made that we had no control over at all, and we are now in this position of having to respond to it. But just to clarify, the subpoenas were issued after the city attorney's office did not respond to the management audit. It is not a normal practice that we have in the city that the controller has to do those subpoenas. So it was in response to them not responding to that. I think that's important to note.
Mr. Parks.
I just would like to clarify one thing. I think the reason for the pushback is the city attorney didn't agree that she had the authority. I mean, so we can go to the chicken and egg and back and forth, but the issue is that city attorney has a letter that's written that says you don't have the authority. She comes forward and says, I'd like to have the authority.
I understand it.
He says, no. She's issued subpoenas. So we can go back and forth, except the original action is caused by the controller saying she wanted to do something that the city attorney in writing has said she had no authority.
As I stated earlier, since I'm still on my time, which was that the city attorney had a conflict of interest in making that determination because it does impact their office. And so if we got an outside interpretation, that would be different. But the opinion that came forward from the city attorney's office as to the interpretation, there's an inherent conflict. No matter what position you have, if they didn't believe they wanted to be interviewed, they said that's because of the conflict of interest there. So...
Let me just say, I disagree a little bit, because when the city attorney addressed the issue of whether it was appropriate in interpreting the language, he interpreted it based on the placement of the gang program in the manager's office.
I understand. And let me just, so I respond, I understand it was the gangs, but the issue of auditing the workers' comp had come up prior to that. So the issue had already been raised about the program. So that in doing that opinion, not getting in the head there, doing that opinion, the city attorney's office was looking at, this has an impact on us if she moves forward with the management audit. So I think it's not clear that it was done in such a way. It was specifically to the gang, you're correct, on the gang issue, but the issue of the workers' comp had been brought up previously. So if you're writing an opinion that potentially could impact your office that is related to the gangs, there is, I believe, a conflict.
Thank you, Mr. Parks and Ms. Gruel. Mr. Reyes.
I wanted to call a question, but I need to ask something else. I was so tempted. If the issue is, as policymakers, defining what's program and policy, what keeps this body from defining program and policy, and have the city attorney and the city controller abide by that? Why don't we define program and policy? Why do we have to wait for a judge to do that? Let's quit this embarrassing discussion. Let's separate the two. Let's do our job, define program, define policy, and have them do their job. City attorney, do your job. City controller, do their job. And let's get it over with. Why can't we define program and policy ourselves? That's my motion. We define program and policy and have city attorney and city controller do their job. That's all the public wants. No one's hiding anything.
Mr. Reyes, would that be a substitute motion then?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second to Mr. Reyes's?
Second.
Second, and thank you very much. Any further debate? There's no one else on the queue, ladies and gentlemen. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the first action? There's no one else on the queue?
The...
Mr. Okay, suddenly...
All right. I just want to respond because I...
Wait, wait, wait. Ms. Gruel? Ms. Gruel, Mr. Weisar has pushed the button, and Ms. Gruel, you're there.
I mean, I do think, again, I think Ed hit the nail on the head with that one. That's our job. We're punting our responsibility. And it seems to me like we're afraid for whatever may happen. We may upset the city attorney, we may upset the controller, we may upset the LA Times, but somehow we're afraid to do our job. And we're going down the track that we're allowing two elected officials in this city to bash each other in the press, and it's not going to be pretty. If we go down this track, I recommend we do mediation. In litigation, you take your glove, put your gloves on, you're ready for a fight. At least mediation, you're sitting down, and people who are elected members of this city should not be bashing each other like that. And I think that Ed hit the nail on the head. We are responsible to do, that's our responsibility. We need, there were three proposals last time. We're not going to make the city attorney completely happy. We're not going to make the controller completely happy, but it's our job to come up with something that makes sense. Now, if they sue each other, and they have every right to do that, I mean, I would hope that they'd see that and want to step back, take a deep breath, and work with us on this one. I know people have been meeting for three months, but perhaps a better way of doing that is to have them each here, have the city, the controller here, and have the city attorney here, and let's go through this step by step. That process is worth a whole lot more than just allowing us to go down this track right now, and it's going to get uglier than it already is. This is not the right way to do it. So I think, Councilmember Reyes, you're onto something. I think you're correct on that. We got to decide, but we should have them both here, and if we have questions and we need them to answer here on the spot for us to decide, they should both be present so we can move forward in that direction.
Mr. Smith, for first time, then Ms. Gruel.
Thank you. And I commend Mr. Reyes. I think he's seen through the chaff, gotten to the heart of the subject, that we need to take control of this situation and stop it. I would just offer an amendment, and I hope it would be a friendly amendment to his motion, that we also instruct both offices to stop doing any actions on this matter, but we will not pay for any actions until we solve this problem. Thank you.
Ms. Gruel.
If only it was that easy, and I guess that's the challenge, and we are the policymakers, but this was a voter-driven charter amendment that was done, and there's a difference of opinion as to the interpretation of that. And we all have our different ideas about what that interpretation is going forward. And we could decide tomorrow that we agree with the city attorney or we agree with the controller. Then Greg Smith is, you know, not here anymore, or Herb Weston's not here anymore, or Jan Perry's, whatever it may be, and another council makes a different decision as to that interpretation. And so the reason that both the city attorney and the controller are fighting in this way and having this discussion is about that interpretation, something that is binding. That's why even a three-member body of judges, it would not be binding for us, and it could be decided, different councils coming in and have some finality is what we're asking for in that way. So that's my only comment on that item.
Ms. Janice Han.
I agree, for the sake of peace on earth. I think we should ask both parties to stand down. Stand down, let the policymaking body make a decision on, you know, what we want this to be. I was on the charter commission. I think I know what we wanted it to be, and I think what you're seeing here is exactly what we wanted to avoid. One political office, you know, having an opportunity to, you know, investigate another political office for, for, you know, whatever reason, but we've seen it in the past, how, you know, that has happened. And I think we on the city charter, I think Erwin Chermyniski might disagree with me, but I think we wanted the city controller to do performance audits of departments to find out, you know, how we could do a better job. We never intended one political office to investigate another political office. So I think we ask both, and I make that a motion, ask both controller, city attorney to stand down. While we look at this, we are the policymaking body here. We need to decide, particularly in very tough times right now, you know, whether or not this is a route we want to take. I personally don't want to take this route. I don't, I was going to not vote to fund the controller's request. I just don't think that's the right thing to do right now. I think, as Jose Weisar said, it's our job. We are the policymaking body. Let's take another crack at it. We're not going to make everybody happy, but I don't think the taxpayers want us to use our money right now to fund a political fight in the public.
Mr. Cardenas, thank you, Mr. President. I don't know if our CLA, I mean, I'd reach out to our CLA, I don't know if Sharon's around or if, if you want to come forward, or the council. I completely agree. I mean, I think that's what we've been trying to get. We don't have formal authority to make anybody stand down, is the issue. So we can have the controller to come back here. I mean, she may be in the building, I don't know. Will you stand down? Will you stand down? But when asked repeatedly for the last three months, they won't stand down. So we can say, we can say it again, and I don't mind doing it in the public setting as well. I think that's great to do. But as a legal matter, if we're asking somebody to stand down, there's been a clock that has been ticking. It's a 30-day response that the controller gets, and this is two and a half weeks into it. So that's the only fairness principle. Personalities aside, that, okay, if it's you next time, if it's some other part of our body, if we have a 30-day clock that's going, are we going to, while people are deciding whether or not they're going to stand down, give me five days to think about it? Like, that decision may come in, and it's going to have been, you know, one person had... Yeah, and it can always reverse. It's a very good point Ms. Gruel makes. But in this case right now, and I'm happy to have anybody be point on this, our chair of audits can do it, our chair of budget can do it, our other folks can do it, but trust me, I mean, as your elected representative, as Ms. Gruel being your president pro tem, we have gotten into the muck here of this, and there's plenty of it. But nobody is going to stand down as Earth is today. So we're making a different decision. Sure, absolutely. I mean, we can hold this on the desk and see if, and we can ask the city attorney's representative, I mean, is there anything?
Councilmember, on that subject, prior to round two that we're in, the city attorney sent a letter to the controller saying, we understand the council's taking this up again. We believe we both should stand down while the council considers this matter. And the city attorney stands behind that, and we're ready to stand down.
So the controller, I think, sorry, so the controller was the one who said, the initial thing, if you then unpack the standing downs, the first act is the subpoenas. So we can ask the controller, I mean, it's in her hands in essence, but if she doesn't stand down, then, then I'd like to, you know, the body needs to make a decision. But we're, that has been asked many times of her, and I'm pleased to be able to ask her again, and we'll hold that on the desk to see. But the lawsuit with, is the city attorney willing to, on the 30-day clock, hold off Is the city attorney willing to, on the 30-day clock, hold off on that?
Yes, council.
To give an extension of an extra 30 days?
Thirty days.
There we go. Little progress there. See? Negotiation at that table always happens. Well, so that gives us 30 days so that the gun to our head on the comptroller's side isn't there, so she could reset that clock. So the, my, the city attorney may know the date's exactly, there's about 10 days left on that 30 days, roughly. Why don't you come forward, because we're doing an open hearing. I'm sorry. Just come to the table this time. It's a little easier. Vox lonely.
Yes, sir, we believe the response is June 19th. We're happy to continue that right now.
Okay. So that gives us a little bit of time on the legal side, so to say another 30 days. That's done here publicly, appreciate that very much. And if the comptroller is still here and is able to come back, perhaps we can have her come back, and the question that's been proposed, we can propose publicly, and she can respond to publicly as well, from the folks who put that forward today, and if not, we can do that on Friday or around her schedule. Gives her some breathing room of not feeling like she's under the gun, which, again, personalities aside, we can all understand, if a court is saying you have 30 days to respond and you're at 10 days left, you're going to come and say, "Give me, you know, counsel." But in the meantime, we can have her come forward and see if she will take the offer that, as to this point, she hasn't. And the mediation piece, too. I mean, there's two things that have been suggested. The mediation, I think Ms. Grule's point is the really important one there, because we all totally were into that. I know our city, our chief legislative analyst suggested that. It's not binding, is the problem. So we might resolve for now, and we can decide to. But if we do believe, and I've heard everybody around here saying that people do deserve to be clear on what this is, we are never going to have 100% agreement necessarily on exactly what we ask of the people, but I do agree, I voted for it before, I would vote for it again, that that should be put before the voters, because that's one way to permanently resolve it. We don't know if we're going to have a May runoff, so that's the only other option this year, but we may have, you know, statewide special election in June, and we may have, you know, for the sales tax that the governor has proposed, or we may be able to then do it the following year. Yeah, sure.
Mr. Reyes?
Yes, sir. For the sake of our fiduciary responsibilities, why don't we have the two stand down? It sounds like one party does. If the program and policy question is the essence of the issue, let's have this policy body do that. I understand you're saying it's not binding. I understand that.
I agree with you and would do that. When I asked the comptroller last week if she'd be willing to, because what Mr. Alacon, who I support, put forward, "Let's get an outside audit," she said that the audit is less important to her now than the resolution of this charter issue. So that's just a point of information.
All right, so that'd be the case, if we can come to a point where we can get to that specificity and put it to the voters again later, if that is the decision of this body. But I think we should just need to cut this out and, you know, cooler heads prevail and move forward as an institution of a policymaking body that we are.
Members, there are no speakers on the queue. We...
My understanding is the comptroller's on her way. Let's hold this on the desk, and we can have the folks who've wanted to ask her a question that's been asked a number of times of her, do it here publicly and hear what the responses.
Okay, then that matter would be held, no objection? The next, Madam Clerk, what is the next?
Next item, Mr. President, would be item number 13, and that was called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn. I thought it was 13. It's the Watts Corridor, Watts Corridor Recovery Redevelopment Area, expand the project boundary, eminent domain redevelopment.
Thanks, Mr. Alacon. Colleagues, this item is, we are approving an expansion of the CRA Watts Corridor Project area, which will have a very good benefit for Watts and the surrounding areas. On April 1st of this year, the Housing Authority purchased the adjacent land to Jordan Downs, which was located in LA County. And the vision, finally, is something that I know a lot of people have been wanting, a lot of people have been working toward since I was elected. This was something I wanted to be able to undertake, and that's the redevelopment of the Jordan Downs housing project. And the vision is that we are going to, because we were able to purchase adjacent property, we will be able to transform Jordan Downs into a community, a mixed-income community with retail and other services, without having to displace residents of Jordan Downs. We'll be able to build replacement housing. We'll be able to deal with each family, each resident in Jordan Downs with dignity and respect. Many of the community members from Jordan Downs and in Watts have traveled to other places in the country and looked at other successful transformation of housing developments, you know, and there's always a lot of fear that comes with redeveloping housing projects. We want to do this one right. We want to do it with respect. We want to do it with dignity. But we think the time has come that we can achieve this goal. And the benefit of approving the expansion of the Watts Corridor Project area is to include the redeveloped Jordan Downs housing development and other public housing developments in Watts, and this will allow the CRA to work closely with Hackla in order to leverage federal and state funds necessary to revitalize the Jordan Downs housing development. We're hoping, with the new administration in Washington DC and with our relationships here between our mayor and our council president, Eric Garcetti, that the president of hope for this country will reinstitute the HOPE 6 grants, which will be so vital to really giving people in Watts an opportunity to own their own home and to be a part of a redevelopment and a transformation that they deserve. So I think this is a good move for us, and I hope I can count on all of your support today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes is our next speaker.
I just want to stand and support my colleague. I had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Montiel, and I saw one of the plans and how it's evolving, and I think it's imperative that we understand that by dispersing and breaking down economic ghettos is the healthiest way to start bringing back vibrancy to our communities that have been forgotten for decades. This plan achieves that by creating a mix of uses, a mix of incomes, but also focuses on the notion of desirability and quality, which stimulates this whole idea of being desirable as a location. So my hat's off to you. It's a great approach, but more importantly, it's about how the people that live there can begin to define themselves and how they begin to change the day-to-day, how can I say, these behaviorisms that at times hurt our children, our families, and keeps business away. This does just the opposite. So congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. With that, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. The city comptroller is here, and she'll be coming forward as we're doing that. Let's take up the ordinances as well that we held on the table, two, 25 through 27, and 43, please. We can prepare the roll on those and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Those are approved. All right, is there anybody specifically, Mr. Weisar, I know you had asked, or Mr. Reyes, any, I think the comptroller wants to make a statement, but...
I'm here to answer a question that I think I've been posed informally.
Okay. Or Ms. Hahn, I know. Is there any question? The comptroller's come back here to answer a, you know, a question and make a statement, so if you want to...
Comptroller, I, there's a lot of discussion right now, and the idea, I think a lot of councilmembers were expressing the idea to see if we could work something out, to put something on the ballot that will probably not make everyone 100% happy, but there's going to be some range. And we, the suggestion came up from councilmembers to say, can we take a deep breath, slow down? And obviously, if you've been sued, I support you being able to defend yourself and get the funding for that, if that's the direction we are going. But the other possibility is to say, let's go back to the drawing board and see what we could come up with, and the council here has expressed an interest in saying, that's our role, is to vote on something we could put on the ballot for the voters to decide what the charter should say. So that was, in a nutshell, the conversation that happened right now. Any thoughts on that?
Yes, Councilman. There's a lawsuit that's been filed. It's my intent to engage the services of an attorney to respond to that lawsuit. Since I haven't had time to consult with an attorney, to meet the deadline of the 30 days on that lawsuit, we will be going into court to ask for a 30-day continuance in terms of stepping back in any other way, and that is a request for delay to the courts. I'm not asking the city attorney or anyone else for any other delay or action. In terms of the city council deciding to put something on the ballot, I totally agree. That is your right, and I have no comment on that. I had a lot to say some months ago when the council was considering doing that, and I was very much in favor of that. Your comment about maybe something would go on the ballot that won't make everyone happy, again, I will reiterate, this is not about me, and it's not about the city attorney. It's about the people of the city, having the opportunity, which they missed on the March ballot by the council's decision, to make their voice heard about what their intent was when they gave the city comptroller the power of performance audit of programs in the city. Anything short of a straightforward language was not asking the right question. But that is your right to debate it again, to take all the time the council wants in its deliberations on policy issues. This is a dispute, a disagreement about charter-mandated duties to two independently equal elected officials, and I believe the only place left for that to be decided is the court. I have waited a long time for this. This started years ago. This started in my first term, and it needs to be clarified for the people of the city. And I trust the courts. I am taking a chance that they will decide that I am incorrect. But I want the opportunity to argue on behalf of the people of Los Angeles, that the city comptroller is clearly allowed and mandated, in fact, by the charter, to do performance audits of all programs. So the answer is a very clear-cut, no, I will not stand down, no, I will not step aside, no, I will not delay. I will ask the court for a delay so I can have proper legal advice. This fight, because now it's a fight about what the city charter says, needs to go to the court, court deliberation.
So to reiterate, you said that the only place you think this could be resolved is in the courts, and you're firm on that. You don't want to come back and speak to the council and see if something, because, let me tell you, let me tell you...
No. I think everything's been said, Councilman.
Excuse me, comptroller, comptroller, hold on. I have the floor. As the chair of audits, you know, this came to me, apparently there were some discussions happening elsewhere. I had to go through my committee, so that's how I got involved in it. A motion was presented to me. I agreed with it. I said, "This is fine. I don't totally agree with it. I'm not 100% happy with it, but I could live with it because we should resolve these problems." And then another motion came the day of the vote that changed one word, and or or. And it made a big difference. It made a big difference. As someone who wasn't involved in those discussions, I started asking a lot of questions at that meeting. I said, "What's the impact of this? We should all just, as part of the policy process, still understand what this means and maybe come back." I agreed with the original motion, that, you know, I wasn't 100% happy with it, but it had something there that I think I could live with. But that one change in word, from an and to an or, or to an and, I don't forget what it was.
Was significant, wasn't it?
It was significant in terms of the scope of what it means. So, but that's something that's part of the policy process. I expected us to come back at some point and finish that discussion and then vote on something, and if we vote on it before January, some deadline there, we could put it on the May ballot. I thought that's the process we were going, and, you know, I was, I don't think that it's right for us to say, "We have no other recourse but go to the courts." I mean, we, all of us have that right. We could sue anybody we want. But I was a bit surprised to hear that that's the only recourse we would want to take right now.
No, apparently it isn't the only recourse you want to take.
Yeah.
And that is your right, and I'm not arguing that.
Okay. And another right we have is by January, there's a January deadline, to come up with something that we could place on the ballot for the May, Bay election. Any thoughts on that?
I gave you my thoughts, Councilman. I have nothing further to say.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Reyes?
I would just ask for the vote, so we can get this over with.
Ms. Grule, did you, are we calling a question?
Call a question.
Okay. We just have Ms. Grule on the, on the queue, but if there's no objection, then...
What's in front of us?
Yeah, I just want to see if the question's called. Okay, if there's no objection to that motion, the question is called. The city clerk can walk us through what has been offered by a number of members.
There are two, actually, substitute motions. The first one that was moved the last was that council defined the policy, and then there was an amendment to that, that to instruct both parties to stand down, to stop, and then not pay for anything in the meantime. And that was the first substitute motion. And if that, there would be a vote on the question of whether to substitute first.
Right. Okay. Very clear on that. And in terms of the council defined the policy, does maker of the motions want to define further what that was? Was that, who was the maker of the motion? Was that Ms. Hahn?
Mr. Reyes.
Mr. Reyes. Mr. Reyes's motion, okay.
Just to clarify, does that, does that mean if they, if they don't stand down, that you, you're not saying still pay for representation? You're just separating that? Okay.
It's separated, okay. So, so it's, it's not, just to be clear, it wouldn't be then for not to pay, but that is put off? Okay. All right. Mr. Weisar, do you have a question?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, which item are we voting on first?
That one. We're taking it in reverse order. We haven't done any other ones.
The first vote is question of whether to substitute first.
So, right. So we would open the roll on substitution. I would ask for, I vote, I think there's consensus on this, to, right, to substitute. We have to open the roll on that first, whether to substitute.
There's a question of whether to substitute, but there are two substitute motions.
Why don't you walk us through the second one, so folks will know at a time.
Then the other substitute motion was then to authorize the $100,000 for the outside council.
And, and those would not necessarily be mutually exclusive, but the first one would put off the second one. Okay? Let's open the roll on the second, the first one that was described, the second one that was made, Mr. Reyes's motion. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes, one no.
Okay.
And, Mr. President, I'm sorry, just for clarification, was that the question of whether to substitute, or you were actually voting on the substitute?
On the substitute.
Okay.
On the substitute. Not here any objection to the substitute motion, so, okay. That will, sorry, that will take us to the next item, which is on the authorizing of the $100,000 in the meantime as well.
President, the substitute takes precedence and ends debate on all the items.
It should, the substitute, was it offered just as a substitute, or was it offered as a motion on the floor?
It was a substitute.
It was a substitute because there is a budget and finance committee report in front of council.
There was no recommendation. That's why it really...
But with no recommendation, yeah, that was...
There was no recommendation that came from the councils, the budget committee, so the first motion that I made, that you seconded and Mr. Alacon seconded, was actually the first motion. This was a substitute motion that we just voted on. So we would still have to vote on that first.
No. A substitute motion takes the place of all the motions.
If it is a substitute, but we're trying to clarify if the second one was formally a substitute motion.
Because they originally described it as two substitutes.
If there's no recommendation that has been made, whether that's a substitution or a motion from the floor.
If you voted on the first one, it would suspend the other one.
The Reyes motion substitutes all previous motions. The other substitute motion clarified, and it really wasn't a substitute motion, it was an amending motion, quite frankly.
Right, yeah, that's, that's my point, is it's an amending motion. So if it, if it is an amending motion, the substitute that we voted on would be the order of the day for now.
Right.
Okay. All right. Next item, please.
Next item is item number 29, and that was called special for card.
Okay, item number 29. We have a card from Arnold Sachs.[1722.63] Okay, item number 29, we have a card from Arnold Sacks. Come on forward.
Well, good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. After listening to the discussion on the previous item, I just hope that the council takes into account... Should I wait for everybody to stop? I guess not.
We could ask folks who are leaving the room and others to please keep their conversations to minimum. Thank you.
That the council takes into account the minutia that they looked at over the wording of the ordinances and these motions. Because when it's good for the council, then they will dissect and x-ray and overturn and look between and separate every letter of every word so they can make sure that they can chew it up. But when it's for the public's benefit, there's a difference. It's what, who, pass, money. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We can open the roll on this item? Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. If we can take the special one now out of order, if there's no objection. Mr. City Attorney on the findings.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Since the posting of today's agenda, a vote in the U.S. House of Representatives has been called for this Friday on a bill regarding government assistance to the auto industry. Immediate action is required in order for the full council to support such legislation rather than utilize procedures set forth in Administrative Code Section 2.19. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substance of motion.
Thank you. Anybody else on the findings? If not on the findings, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Mr. Reyes on the substance.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I put forth a special one. We know that today, if not tomorrow, there will be a vote to deal with supporting our auto industry and making sure that we keep jobs and hopefully create jobs. I put this forth as the second largest city in the country and one of the major pivotal points of the manufacturing base of the auto industry and being the portal to an international economy. This city can send a loud message to our elected representatives. It's important that we keep our jobs, many of the middle-class jobs, many of the jobs that, many jobs that pertain to our constituents are at stake. So I felt this was important enough to send a clear message that we as a body find it imperative that Congress act, that they also look at the welfare of the workers who are involved with the auto industry and to sustain the middle class that does survive in the city by sustaining these jobs. So I ask for an aye vote on this special. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
I want to support what my colleague just said. I'm almost delighted to hear that the Congress might pass some piece of legislation right now, throw $15 billion into play, even put a CARZAR above it to see if they don't retool their, their manufacturing plants to the new day we're in and redo their business. Bottom line is, we put a trillion dollars in the hands of corporate America, and for God's sake, the worker is what I care about, the middle class is what I care about, and we threw it at them with practically no restrictions whatsoever. And when, when, when the big business always says, "Oh, we're against welfare and socialism and all that baloney," they end up getting the biggest bailout in the history of the planet because they couldn't keep their act together. So, you know, I just find a double standard all the time. The banks, these other groups, they always get the money when they want it with no restrictions. Here we're putting restrictions on, which I think we should have done. The automobile industry in the '70s knew darn well, when Carter was president, that they needed to retool those plants and do the fuel efficiency like the Japanese did, but they didn't. It was a year-to-year profit mindset that pretty much is what capitalism is about, and they didn't invest in the future. So we don't want to see the workers lose. My God, one out of 10 Americans is somewhat connected with the auto industry, and we know good middle-class jobs are at stake here. I went to the Lane Dinner last night, and that's what we're worrying about, is keeping the middle class and the working class living well enough that they can pay their bills. So applaud you, Mr. Reyes, for our city taking this positive position. We've got to support the workers, we've got to support the middle class. But I do want those executives of those auto industries to be held accountable with how they spend that money in the best interest of the people. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Nobody else wishes to be heard? Let's go ahead, no, yes, Mr. Labange.
Do we have any requirement in the city that we buy cars built in America only?
We do not. Since we've been doing the hybrid policy and stuff like that, there's options...
But they're built in America.
Sorry, no, I'm just letting you know as a point of information, my understanding is that we do not. And that, and part of that was the history of, at least early on, the hybrids, the Hondas and, and Toyotas were the only ones that were available.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item called special, please.
Next item is item number 31, and that was called special by Councilmember Weezer, and I believe there are cards as well.
Okay. Why don't we take the cards first on this item 31? Clyde Williams is our first speaker. Thank you for your patience.
Hello, my name is Clyde Williams. I live at 4115 Barrett Road in El Serrano. I have reviewed the reports and the contract that has been prepared by the Recreation and Parks Department. Terms and conditions of the Hazard Park Armory agreement are inadequate to provide support and to provide services to the surrounding neighborhoods and to protect the communities of those neighborhoods from further expansion of USC and counties dominance in the area. Recreation and Park has demonstrated that they could not enforce or control the 20 years of the lease agreement of the Autry National Center in Griffith Park. So how can we be assured that they will be able to control an even looser agreement as provided in the documents? The schedules, the temporal schedules in the reports are not included in the contracts. The figure B is largely unintelligible and open to interpretation as to compliance or non-compliance subject to defaults. Concessions are excluded in the reports, but a concessionary agreement can be allowed within the contract. Operations and maintenance are very unclear as to who's going to do what and who's going to pay the cost. There is no means of community participation, monitoring, or audit in this entire document, somewhat similar to Griffith Parks and the Southwest Museum. There's no mention of the neighborhood council's considerations, and there are no supportive community impacts studies or statements from the surrounding three neighborhoods. Concerns still exist regarding USC, County, and LA Unified's expansion in the area and the lack of control over that expansion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Martha Gonzalez and Martha Perez-Vallier are our next speakers. And after that is Monique Munkayo. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Martha Vallier. I'm here for, to support the project for the Hazard Park, for the armory. We are the community, and we know what our community kids need. We sell a lot of support, we have a lot of support for the community, and I know the people outside for the community, and we are talking about the armory, but we are the community, and we know what we need and what our kids need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Martha Gonzalez. We need more program for the job, and the community will support this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Monique Munkayo is next, and then Jose Hernandez and Carla Garcia.
I had planned to say good morning, but good afternoon. My name is Monique Munkayo. I am the Youth Outreach Coordinator for Legacy LA. I also am a city employee for Hazard Recreation Center. I run a teen program there, which is where I started off before I joined Legacy LA. I have been a Hazard Park patron since I was 10. I was one of the very first after-school program participants because they finally figured out that they had to do something with me and all my five sisters. So I've been there for a long time. I grew up there. I did not live in the Ramona Gardens Housing Development, but I grew up there. That's where I made all my friends, that's where I fell in love, that's where, that's where, that's my home. So it was an absolute yes when they asked me to, to be part of the Legacy family. I, as, as he said, "How can we be sure that it will remain in the hands of the community?" I, I consider myself the community. We have mothers that support us, we have hired youth to help us design the armory and what it's going to look like. We have asked them, we have went to the community to ask them for their support, to ask them for their ideas. We are asking our community to dream big, that's our motto, dream big. If you could have anything you want, what would it be? So we're changing the culture there. We're giving, we're instilling hope in their, in their hearts. So, but in order to do that, we need your help. So that's what I'm here, standing before you, urging you to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your work. Jose Hernandez and Carla Garcia, and then Maria Lu Calanche.
My name is Carla Garcia. I'm 16 years old. I attend Abraham Lincoln High School, and I'm one of the 10 youth fellow members.
Good afternoon. My name is Jose Hernandez. I go to Lincoln High School. I'm one of the great being fellows, and we've been helping, I work for Legacy LA. We've been helping the community to build the armory into a youth center, and we want you guys to give us the opportunity to make this happen because I want this to happen for my community so that our kids can stay out of trouble. Thank you.
Thank you. Is this your first time at City Hall?
Yes, sir.
All right. Great job. Thanks for coming in. Our last speaker is Maria Lu Calanche. She, she have to go?
Yes, she should.
Okay. We'll make sure her name is entered in the record. And with that, we'll call on the great council member from the 14th District, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And colleagues, this is something I'm really excited about. We're taking here a vacant, well, actually not a vacant, armory in Hazard Park, but something that houses old trucks right now, and we're going to put young people in there in this community that needs more community centers to learn about the arts, about technology, and a variety of other services. As we talked about when we went through the restructuring of our gang prevention and intervention programming, this is what we're doing here. We're turning an old dilapidated building and put it to better use by providing our young people with a place to be after school and not to be in the streets where they can get into more trouble. What I like about this is that Legacy LA, the overseeing body that we're getting into an MOU with, will provide the oversight and the infrastructure to work with other organizations in the area to come into the site and provide their service. I was really happy to see and hear about the outreach that Legacy LA did. They actually went out to the community, asked them what they wanted to see, and they actually enrolled a number of our young people in the community as ambassadors, and they were actually hired by a grant that we received from the California Community Foundation. And we were able to, to have them employed to go out in the community and ask the young people in the community to see what they would like to see. I ask for your support on this, and I'd like to thank the Chair of the Recreation and Parks Committee, Tom Labange, for your support in moving this, this through committee. And this is great because I think, as we look around our districts and the city, and we see areas that are not being fully utilized, we can think about it creatively, and in this instance, we're going to be housing young people, learning and educating themselves rather than housing trucks that have been there for some time. I ask for your support on this, and particularly in light of all the work we have done on the gang prevention intervention work, I know Ms. Han's been very active with that. We have, this is one of those items that will add to reducing the number of gang violence in this area and to provide more opportunity for our young people. This has been in the works for some time. When I first got elected, it was proposed as an idea, and I'm happy to see it's finally coming to fruition. And I think at the end of the day, Ramona Gardens Housing Project and all the young people of Boa Heights are going to have a wonderful place to be when this project is finished. We still have a lot of work to do, but at least we got to this point where we have the MOU with Hazard Park. Thank you very much, and thank you to the speakers who are here today. Muchisimas gracias.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weezer, and congratulations on the work, good work. Mr. Labange is next.
Thank you. Mr. Weezer, thank you and congratulations on this, and you and your staff. It does take time. I think it's so important, you look at these buildings, and I know the city of Pasadena did a wonderful job with their armory, and there's other armories around the region that we should look for to duplicate and use. And I also, on a, on a more personal note, Mr. Weezer, I want to congratulate Ramona Gardens and their, their recreation program there. Last night at Glassell Park, they beat the Pan Pacific All-Stars 20 to 18, and my son played for the Pan Pacific All-Stars, and it hurt, broke his heart, but the, the young boys and girls from Ramona Gardens played real well and did a great job. So this is more the effort, because it's all about coaches and cops. It's not going to just be cops, it's not going to be just coaches, it's together with everybody to make a difference. And there's no better place than to see activity than a public park or any facility in the city where people come to and enjoy. Thank you, and congratulations to everybody who's involved.
Thank you very much. That's our last speaker, and thanks to the folks who came and visited me and described the project to me a while back, and congratulations on the good work. With that, let's go ahead and open the roll, and close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please. Congratulations.
Next item is item 35, called special for cards.
Mr. Sacks, item 35?
He hasn't, yeah, he still has two.
Yes, good afternoon. Thank you very much. I'd like to address an article that was written in the LA Times. I'd like to congratulate Councilman Labange for his fine letter regarding the LA Marathon. But the question I have regarding the LA Marathon, actually, two questions. One, when was it, when was the order, or when was the rule that now only allows the marathon to be run on a Monday added to the agenda? At what point, in what meeting, whether it was the rule, the government, the meeting that was held before it was put on the city council agenda, or...
Excuse me, Mr. President. That is not on the agenda right now.
We could stick to the item that's before us, please.
The special events. You have certain rules for special events?
There are three special events on the agenda right now.
Special events. Okay. Regarding special events that only allow, or regarding religious, having scheduling events on weekends because they interfere with religious activities, as was upheld by the ruling regarding the LA Marathon.
Excuse me, just, I'll hold your time. Just, I know you've brought that up a few times. There was no ruling that all religious events, that was a specific one on that, but there was never a policy adopted on religious events in general. So I know you've extrapolated that out, but I just want to clarify from the body, that was something that was made about a specific event as opposed to a category of events, if that's helpful to you?
And, and, and my point being, Mr. President, that if it can be that specific about an event, that it should cover all events. Because the marathon consists of 25,000 runners plus numerous volunteers, and to be overturned or be ruled against, to be moved to a different day based on religious precedence over the, over the outrage of the racers and the, and the organizers, or for the benefit of one particular new organizer, is ridiculous. My point being, again, when was the change addressed? And who addressed it?
Thank you very much. That will close our comments on that. We can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
All right. Next items, please.
Next item is item 41, that was called special for cards.
Okay. Mr. Sacks, item 41. Item 41, sir? Yes, no? I'll assume you're passing, 41? Okay. Passes Zuma Dog is also on 41. Did not see him here, so we will close the public hearing if we can prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved.
And the order goes over for one week.
Okay. I'm sorry, that will roll over. And next, we have Ms. Han, item 45.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Yes, could I have Ken come up? Colleagues, I introduce this because I don't know if it's happened to you, but it happened to me and to my community when Angels Gate Cultural Center and Park was determined to be a historic cultural monument. And it happened so quickly and so fast that it was before, you know, the state commission, before we even in the city council had an opportunity to weigh in. You probably don't remember, but I, I tried to do a 245 to our commission's decision. But it seemed to me, this was a process that needed a little tweaking to make sure that neighborhood councils had an opportunity to weigh in and that the city council had an opportunity to weigh in before the, the process went along so quickly and so fast that it was meaningless when we did weigh in. So maybe you can just explain to us how this process maybe works now and how you see it working with some of these changes. Hold my time.
Ken Bernstein with the Office of Historic Resources in the Department of City Planning. What we're dealing with in response to this motion...
Do you hold my time?
It would be my pleasure.
This applies not to the city historic cultural monument nominations, but nominations that are submitted to the National Register of Historic Places and the California Register of Historical Resources. So nominations of potential historic sites to the state and federal government. And the reason this is a new issue is that last year, Los Angeles became what's called a certified local government for historic preservation, which entitles us now to apply for grant funding for historic preservation planning, which is a positive. It also gives us the ability to comment on those nominations for the first time in a formal way. And most certified local governments have their preservation commission, in our case, the Cultural Heritage Commission submit those comments. The motion pointed out that the city has a defined intergovernmental process under which the council and mayor adopt a resolution to take a position on state and federal matters. So our staff recommendation responds to that intergovernmental process and creates a more defined process that continues to involve the Cultural Heritage Commission as our local commission, making an initial recommendation, but then brings that on to the council and mayor in the form of a resolution, so the city is speaking with one voice on those national and California register nominations. In addition, we are creating a process that will, we will be creating a case in our planning case tracking system, which generates a report and notification to our certified neighborhood councils, which was an issue in the case in your district. So we will be generating that automatic notification to the neighborhood councils and city council offices. We will also be ensuring we are notifying the property owners that this is being considered at the local level. Again, the city's consideration is only advisory. We are taking a position, the final decisions are being made by the State Historical Resources Commission and the case of national register nominations by the National Park Service.
So maybe walk me through exactly how it's going to work. From the time the application is...
Right. The city is receiving notification, the city clerk will be notified that a nomination has been submitted for the national register and California register. That will be referred to the Office of Historic Resources as staff to the Cultural Heritage Commission. We will need to be turning this around very quickly, because we have tight timeframes for the city to comment. Only sixty days for the national register and ninety days for California register nominations. So we don't have a lot of time to take it through this process. So we will be scheduling these for immediate consideration, the first available meeting of the Cultural Heritage Commission. They will be taking an action to...
At what point where neighborhood councils be notified?
As soon as we create a case in our, we will immediately be creating a case in the planning case tracking system.
After it comes to the commission?
No, prior to it, I'm sorry, prior to it coming to the commission.
So the moment we get notified, the city clerk gets notified?
Yes, we will be immediately creating a case for it. It will have a case number, and will, as we do with our city historic cultural monument applications, and there will be notification generated to the neighborhood councils and the council offices as a result of that. The commission will act, and then it will go, it will take a path similar to the way our historic cultural monument applications do. It will come to council, and under this intergovernmental relations procedure, the mayor needs to sign the resolution as well. So that all has to happen in the sixty to ninety day period. The recommendation is that this be referred to, because it is an intergovernmental action, that it goes to the Rules and Government Committee. Even though we recognize it has land use implications, again, under the city's intergovernmental policy and the council's procedures, typically that would go to the Rules Committee. Again, from our standpoint, it does not matter which committee it goes to, but it needs to be turned around quickly if the city is going to have a say in these nominations going to other levels of government.
Right. Thank you. I mean, I see how we're attempting to get an input from the city as a whole, as well as from interested groups, neighborhood councils. My recommendation, and I don't know what this would actually look like, but my recommendation is, in some way, when this comes to city council, you know, it's practically written in red. You know, we have sixty days, and probably less than that by the time it gets here. That this has to really fly through the process. We've got the vehicle, but I want to make sure that when it gets referred, in some way, you have made it extremely obvious, the date, the timeline. Maybe that puts, it's put at the beginning of the initiative. So that would be my friendly amendment to all this, is somehow you indicate when it comes of the deadline. Because I think that would help all of us. And I also think when it's referred to neighborhood councils, the same thing needs to be, you know, they need to be notified in that way, especially neighborhood councils. Sometimes they, you know, only meet once a month, they have a whole agenda planning subcommittee. So I just want to make sure, again, information is knowledge is power.
Right.
And it's one thing to have the vehicle, to have our input, but it's another thing, I think, for you to make it ultimately very clear on the timeline.
And we're happy to do that.
Yeah.
And just to be clear, because of the tight timeframe, we will probably have to schedule the commission's consideration, in some cases, before the neighborhood councils have had an opportunity to review and respond.
Well, you know, I see that. But you know what? According to our city charter, that's unconstitutional. Our city charter says that no board or commission will make a decision until neighborhood councils have had time to weigh in. So I would advise against that. We're going to have to figure this out.
Yeah.
But that's against our city charter.
Right.
So what's the point of doing it if the neighborhood councils haven't weighed in?
Right.
So you can't do that.
Okay.
So we're going to have to figure this out, but I really am going to ask you to work with us.
We're happy to do that.
Yeah, I think that's what's important, is that we try to work together on this so that everybody has their voice heard.
Yeah, in many cases, we will only have, we just received, happened, have received some last week that were sent right before Thanksgiving. It took us ten days to receive the notice, and we have a sixty day timeframe. So we have withheld any comment while we've been waiting for policy guidance from the council on this issue. But in many cases, we will only have about a month and a half to go through that whole process.
You know, the timeline seems really rushed. Is this the state level?
It is, it's a state issue.
That seems really rushed. What's the rush? And what's our opportunity to get that changed? Is that state legislation?
It may, I believe it does, it may well require state legislation. That is defined, it's California State Parks and the State Historical Resources Commission that sets those timeframes.
Yeah, you know, that seems really rushed. I mean, probably majority of the cases, we're talking about hundred-year-old, you know, icons, and we've got sixty days to make the decision. I think that's problematic. Maybe you could come back and maybe report to us on the possibility of us maybe working with some of our state legislators to extend that time. I just think that that's a big rush, and I think that's unfortunate.
Well, we couldn't agree more, we'd be happy to work with you on that.
Okay, why don't we work on that?
Absolutely.
Okay, well, thank you for helping us on this, but it still seems like it's a process that's excluding, you know, the community from weighing in on these projects. And they do have, you know, impact. They have an impact to neighborhoods and local communities, and, you know, master plans. So, you know, I think we need more time. Thank you.
Couldn't agree more, thanks.
Thank you. All right.
So I had a couple friendly amendments in there.
Absolutely. Those were accepted as friendly, because I heard no objection, as almost every one of Ms. Hahn's amendments are friendly. Almost. With that, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
Their excuses on the desk. Council President Garcetti requests to leave at 1:00 PM Wednesday, December seventeenth for city business. Motion is required.
What does that take us down to?
Eleven.
Okay, I'll go ahead and move that, Mr. Alacon, second. And that excuse is granted.
Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused Friday, January thirtieth for city business. That meets council policy.
She's excused?
Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused Friday, January ninth for city business. That meets council policy.
She's excused.
And that clears the desk.
Any business announcements, folks? Mr. Labange?
We've had a very successful DWP Light Festival with walking, and now it's open to vehicles, so from around the city and the region, people could drive through the Light Festival. We encouraged them to walk, but it was a great one.
Just a friendly reminder, business announcements for like committees and stuff like that, yes? Mr. Rosenau?
An announcement, as I mentioned when the fellow is being confirmed, a day without a gay is today. Well, you're not without me, you got me, and I'm still here. But the reason I'm here is because we're public servants for all the people. But you know, a day without a gay is to tell people in this great nation of ours that we're everywhere, that we are part of every institution, every organization. I noticed that the staffers here who are openly gay, they showed up too. So, but our bottom line is, we don't have our basic civil rights. First of all, we can't even be in the military, though I was in the military in Vietnam every day. And second of all, we don't have the basic rights of partnerships, that no on eight business and yes on eight that happened. We need our basic rights as Americans. You know, when two people get together and they form a united front, they should have inheritance rights, you know, they should have healthcare rights, they should have visitation rights, adoption rights, and if your partner happens to be from another country, they should have citizen rights. We don't have it. We don't have our basic civil rights. So I say to all my brothers and sisters who are out today, you know, a day without a gay, let everybody realize we're everywhere, and our basic civil rights are as important as heterosexuals' basic civil rights, and we don't have it yet in this great country. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenau. Do we have any adjourning motions today? If I can ask everybody, please rise for adjourning motions. I can ask everybody in chambers to please rise. And we'll start with Mr. Alacon.
Councilmembers, I'd like to introduce an adjourning motion resulting from the death of a very good friend of mine, Chris Mojica Gomez. Chris Mojica passed away at the age of fifty-eight after five months on life support following a fall where she hit her head. She suffered for over four years with a neurological disease with Parkinson-like symptoms. She was born in East Los Angeles, she graduated from Montebello High School in nineteen sixty-four. She went on to the University of California Riverside and graduated with a bachelor's degree in business. Chris was one of the very first employees of Telecu when it was founded in nineteen sixty-eight. She was a founding member of Comisión Feminino, where she began a movement of empowering Latina women in California. She went on to help form the Chicano Service Action Center with Francisco Flores and Corinne Sanchez, and that's where I knew her as an employee of the Chicano Service Action Center. I can tell you that she was absolutely dedicated to the cause of the advancement of women in our economic system. She wrote the first youth grant bringing new population of young Latinas into the workforce. She ran their Handy Woman program, placing women in non-traditional jobs like construction and cement masonry. She set up the first bilingual shelter for battered women in Los Angeles County. In nineteen eighty, she became a special assistant to the president of the National Council of La Raza in Washington DC, where she would travel around the country, meeting with heads of large corporations, acquiring funding for NCLR, and advocating the breaking of the glass ceiling for women. Under her, upon her return to California, Chris worked for a neighborhood reinvestment corporation, and she created four neighborhood housing service program and a citywide board of directors simultaneously. She organized the Boyle Heights, Crenshaw, Barton Hill, and San Pedro communities to work to improve their communities and homes. She resigned from the Neighborhood Reinvestment Corporation after ten years to raise her only son, Ryan. You know, Chris was not a household name. She's not somebody who was famous, but as you could see by her accomplishments, she's one of those people in the social justice movement who may go unsung, but who absolutely is critical to the foundation of a more justice-oriented United States of America. She was a great friend, and I'm very saddened at her loss. She was survived, she is survived by her husband Roland, her son Ryan, her mother Hortensia Mojica, her brothers Ray, Danny, and Sal Junior, and her sister Lupe. And we all express our condolences for somebody who had a tremendous impact on women, in particular Latinas, in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two adjourning motions. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Priscilla Mildred Penagar. Was born November nineteen oh eight in Arkansas. In her early adult life, she relocated in Kansas City. Nineteen forty-four, she moved to Los Angeles and became a member of the St. John Methodist Church. And early nineteen fifty, she started to work with LA Unified, and also became a member of the Great Hope Missionary Baptist Church under the leadership of Reverend De Vall. She met and married her husband in nineteen sixty-six, and she retired from LA Unified and was awarded a certificate of appreciation after eighteen years of dedicated service. She has a variety of activities within the church, member of the choir, the Sunday School Department, pastor's aide, a variety of mission and board participation. Funeral services were scheduled for Wednesday, December the tenth, twelve PM, at Great Hope Missionary Baptist Church, survived by a host of relatives. I also ask that we adjourn in memory of Marie El Assad, that's the mother of Delara Rodriguez, who's my deputy on transportation, SCAG, and MTA. Come over here, Delara. Marie was born in nineteen twenty-seven, passed away on November two thousand and eight. She was the eldest of three children. In forty-nine, she married her husband Bahajat El Assad in Beirut, Lebanon, and had two daughters and one son. She migrated to US in eighty-seven, and was joined by her children after her husband passed away. She set up roots in Glendale. She watched her three children grow up, become married, and also parents. She was certainly a very happy and proud person, particularly of her American citizenship. She embraced and helped all people without asking for anything in return. Her funeral services were held December the fourth at three PM at Forest Lawn in Hollywood Hills, Church of the Hills. She survived by her two brothers and her three children.
We all members on that, and we're very sorry for your loss. Mr. Labange?
I ask we adjourn in memory of Odetta Holmes, that classic folk singer, trained in blues gospel singer, African-American woman who really was a champion of the music and civil rights for more than a half a century in the folk revival movement in the nineteen fifties. He grew up here in Los Angeles and went to our own Belmont High School. Also, I ask we adjourn in memory of Elmer Valentine, the co-founder of the Whiskey of Go-Go, the great Mecca for music, where classic rock and roll, legendary rock and roll was showcased there in the nineteen sixties. Elmer Valentine. Nina Foote passed away since we last meet, the veteran axis of Hollywood film, nor era, a classic, widely respected acting coach and teacher of director. She taught classes at the University of Southern California, and she is survived by her son, Dr. Dirk Di Britto. And also in our district, the fourth district, a great person, a longstanding career in acting as well, Beverly Garland passed away. She had the Beverly Garland Hotel Motel on Vineland Avenue. She survived by her husband and four children. And finally, from the city side here, Robert Lester Wolf passed recently, a graduate from Hollywood High School, who fought for the United States Army in World War II. He was a twenty-five-year employee of the Los Angeles Zoo, and he was a very special keeper there as well. I ask we adjourn in memory of Robert Lester Wolf. And as always, I ask that all members on my certificates, Madam Clerk.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rosenau.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and all members. In memory of Charles Chuck Richard Leon. His son, Charles Leon, worked for me for a couple of years. His father just passed away, he was only fifty-five years old. He was born September eleventh, nineteen fifty-three, and passed away this Monday, December eighth. I was on the phone with his son yesterday, and his father was a remarkable man, I knew him. He was always there for his boy, he was a positive spirit, he always felt things could get better, and he encouraged his son to get involved in politics. He lived most of his life in the South Bay, a graduate of Palos Verdes High School. He got a business degree in accounting from USC and an MBA in accounting from Pepperdine, and he had a law degree from the University of West Los Angeles. This past summer, he moved to Las Vegas with his wife Sharon, another great lady, dynamic duo they are. Chuck loved his family, life, and people. He treated everyone equally and instilled the principles in his sons to always be honest with people, be a straight shooter, always keep in contact with people, and be punctual. Chuck was an amazing father, husband, and friend. He was like a brother to his sons who could go to him and discuss anything. He is now at peace, in a better place, however, will be missed by everyone. Charles R. Leon is in a better place to join his father Arthur, his brother Art Junior, his sister Rosalyn, however, everyone will miss him. He is survived by his wife of thirty-five years, Sharon Leon, his mother Evelyn Leon, his sister... He is survived by his wife of 35 years, Sharon Leon, his mother Evelyn Leon, his sons, the one who worked for me, Charles C. and Michael, and his daughter-in-law Amanda and his granddaughter Abigail. May he rest in peace.
Thank you. And with that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Will next be in session on Friday, that is, the 12th. Have a great afternoon, and this meeting, Los Angeles City Council, is adjourned. Thank you.